Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Super excited to see you here. And a lot of folks we know are on summer break. So if you're glad to see some folks in the crowd joining us, and hopefully those folks that are out there watching as well. You know, it's great honor today to invite one of our teachers to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today, and that is Chief Warrant Officer Phil Ayala. Can you please lead us in the pledge? And also, thank you for your service.
Good evening. Go ahead and face the flag. Military members can salute. Nonmilitary, please place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Dr. Wyatt.
No, thank you. And if I didn't mention, he's also a teacher in our district. So gotta love both of those things. Thank you for serving our country as well and for leading our meeting. All right, we'll move on to our approval of the agenda, 1.3.
It's been moved and properly second.
Are there any items to pull?
Dr. Wyatt, I do have an item.
Yes, sir.
Item 10.3 will be, we will remove and bring back during our next board meeting, there's some information in that we need to include. 10.3.
All righty, are there any other items to discuss or pull? Okay.
Do that later to pull when we...
On consent? Okay, on consent. Very good. All righty, well, if there's no discussion, let's go ahead and vote on the agenda as amended. All right, agenda carries as amended. And I apologize, I did not mention that Ms. Abios is en route right now. She did let us know that she's running a little bit late, stuck in traffic. So, all right, 1.4 inspirational message. Mr. Danny Tillman, Vice President Tillman.
Thank you, President Dr. Scott Wyatt. Appreciate that. First, I want to just start off by saying just a good feeling in the district. I know we're about ready to embark on a new school year, so I am excited about that. I want to make a statement, and part of the statement is extremely negative, but I want to say in terms of inspiration, to demonstrate the type of strength you have to have as elected officials because of some of the stuff that we go through. On June 24th, there was an article published in the, in a paper, and usually I wouldn't address this, but they told blatant lies against me, but worse than that, they told a lie about my wife. So I just want this to be a on record of me setting the record straight. When I was a kid growing up, I remember my, my grandmother seeing me sad one day, and she said, what's wrong? And I said, well, someone told this lie on me, and they said something bad about me. And my grandmother looked at me with disdain and said, "Little Dan," that's what she called me, "they talked about Jesus. What do you think they're gonna say about you?" Which meant that, because my grandma was very religious, and in our religion, Jesus was the only man that worked, walked the earth that was perfect, but people still said negative things about him. So you should expect that people are gonna say bad things about you. And as a politician, that's even more so. It's, I understand that. But when it gets blatant and impacts, I think the work that we do, then I have to, I just want today's meeting to be a place where somebody can say, go to July 19th's board meeting, and Danny Tillman said, what part of that article wasn't true? And my wife, Tracy Tillman, they mentioned it by name, worked for the Center for Youth and Community Development and the Girls and Burrows Club San Bernardino from 2018 to 2019. While she worked there, I abstained and walked out the room whenever a vote came up on that item. That's the total story. So there is no, there wouldn't have been a story pertaining to, in this article, the outgoing San Bernardino School District Superintendent's audit caught board member Tillman's conflict. While Mr. Irvin was superintendent, there never was a conflict. My wife was not working at the Center for Youth and Community Development. So the whole four pages of the story make no sense because there was not a conflict. So just so, just so everyone makes it clear, my wife, and the article says here, Tillman's wife, Tracy Tillman, is the chief financial officer for the Center for Youth and Community Development. She is not. She's not. She worked there from 2018 to 2019. So there couldn't be anything involved when Mr. Irvin was here. And that's what the article's about. What's, what I think is scary to me is the article quoted, it says here that the report brought up that San Bernardino City Unified School District staff has relayed to greater gains that the marriage between board member Tillman and CFO Tracy Tillman may have ended. I love my wife. It was the happiest day of my life to marry her, and we are still married. But the crazy persons writing this article wanted so bad to find anything, they were willing to even say, I wasn't married to my wife. And then said that the district staff said it. Now, I couldn't imagine there being any district staff that would make up that lie. But to have people bend over and go to those extents to try to discredit my reputation is sad. And I'll only talk about this because I've had people approach me and say, I've always looked at you in high regard and know how much you cherish your reputation. I never thought you would do something like this. And I didn't. So I just want to make that clear. Now, and I do want to say, I do and have supported the center. Mr. Majati there, when I had my Black Future Leadership Program, he, we take students to the Black College Expo. He brought six black men to the bus at this parking lot to go to the Black College Expo. To some people, that's no big deal. But for him to take the time and have a program that emphasized and instructed young black men of the importance of dressing with a shirt and a tie, that's a big deal to me. And those students went to the Black College Expo, and they got, and they received scholarships. I've walked into the center when they had meetings with groups to reduce the violence in San Bernardino. He had no fear about meeting with the right people to make that happen. And I want to tell a story to the board that we all are familiar with. Before the school year last year started, we all got an email from a parent from Pacuma. And the parent had a concern that she couldn't get her child into the CAPS program because they told her CAPS was full. And she said that because of that, she was gonna pull her child from our school district and have them go to a private school because it was cheaper for her to have her kid attend a private school than it was to go to our school and have to pay for childcare. So I called the parent, and the parent told me that, explained the story to me. And she said that we had a district administrator that called her and told her that the board does, is a bureaucracy that does things that doesn't always benefit the students and the staff. And I told her that was a further thing from the truth about this board. This person was new to the district, but told her that. And I, after talking to her, I said to her on the phone call, I think we can make sure that your child's able to have CAPS at his school because I knew we had just received a lot of additional money. And I know my board, and I know if I present that to them, they were gonna support that. So I hung up the phone. Mr. Majati was the program that was actually doing CAPS at Pacuma. And I asked him, I got a call from a parent, and she's saying that her, you guys don't have room for her child at the CAPS program. And he said, Danny, your district told us reduce the capacity for CAPS from 300 to 100 because of funding. So I knew then that we hadn't given the information, the new information about funding to the district. So after I heard, after he told me that, I asked him, if we had the funding, could you expand? He said, sure, if you guys give us the funding, we could eliminate the waitlist completely. And then I made a phone call, and the district was able to eliminate the waitlist at Pacuma because the Center for Youth and Community Development was able to expand their program. So that's the reality of it. And I say that as a, also as a character witness to the program. Because if, and we're gonna have some item later about the CAPS program and the Center for Youth and Community Development is not on there. But if the people who, and I want to say mean people who helped write this article were also involved in the process of the RFP, then our district has a problem. And I will say this, I brought it up to district staff, and I was told, well, we only gonna do what's best for kids. If it's best for kids is telling lies about me and my wife, and I'm supposed to accept that as part of the process, I will not. And I will always fight for what's right in this district. And this only inspires me to do the right thing. For someone to go to this extent to write an article in a paper with blatant lies, it only inspires me to continue the work that I done and to commend our board and our district staff for moving forward on doing the positive things in the districts that I highlighted tonight. I hope that we continue to do those things. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. And I will just add that I know when I first came on the board, one of the immediate actions we took as a board was to eliminate the waitlist for CAPS. And so we should never have a waiting list for CAPS at any school for any student. We get, we know the money's there. We dedicated the money there on a yearly basis, not just the extra funds we receive right now, but on a yearly basis going on six years now, we've been working to eliminate that waiting list. So I support that there should be no students on a waiting list at any time for CAPS at any school. Dr. Flores.
Thank you, President Wyatt and Vice President Tillman. We, this board has always supported our families and our children. And I'm so happy that we're able to even provide, you know, morning and afternoon. I saw that on our, on our agenda today. And we have the funds to do it and it supports it. I also want to state that, Mr. Tillman, I've served with you for 14 years. And you have been nothing but upright. You've never deviated from your principles. You're honest, the most honest person I know. And you are direct, and you will tell it like it is. And I appreciate you setting the record straight. And it was important to set the record straight because my grandma always said, and my dad, "La mentira dura hasta que la verdad llega." The lie lasts until the truth arrives. And the truth always arrives. "Más tarde que pronto." Later than sooner. And so today, you have clarified with the truth. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Thank you, Dr. Flores. Ms. Rosales Medina.
Going to be really quick, only because I went to the conference, and it actually addressed this. And so there's actually a website in the government that is MDM, which is, and so it's on CISA.com, no, .gov. And it's regarding misinformation, disinformation, and malinformation. And so misinformation is false, but not created or shared with the intention to causing harm. Disinformation is deliberately creating or to mislead, harm, and manipulate a person, social group, organization, or country. And then malinformation is based on a fact, but used out of the context to mislead, harm, and manipulate. And so I think that, and I've, I believe I mentioned this before, and I'm glad you spoke up today, that we have a lot of disinformation going around, and I'm glad you were able to clarify your point of view.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. We will move on to 2.0 public comments. 2.1 received public comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdictions, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. At this time, we are still accepting comments via Zoom, and registration forms required and available for 24 hours prior to all scheduled Board of Education meetings and close at 4:30 PM on the day of the meeting. In-person public comments will be taken first. Participants speaking via Zoom are reminded that any inappropriate language or images will forfeit their registration. They will immediately be removed from the meeting. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will provide no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. And our first public comment today will be, he's already been up here, but Chief Warrant Officer Ayala, come on up again.
All right, let's see if I get my nerves under control this time. Greetings and good evening, board members of San Bernardino City Unified School District, and parents and teachers and staff and superintendents that are here with us today. I want to introduce myself and tell you that my name is Chief Warrant Officer Ayala. I am a teacher, most recently at the Virtual Academy in our awesome district, teaching middle school and high school students about potential military and public service careers. I've been at the district since 2004, when I was first recruited by the school district to work in the Cadet Corps program. I initiated multiple Cadet Corps units, one at Shanning Hills Middle School, one at Pacific High School, and rebuilt the Cajon High School Cadet Program. For the past 10 years before the Virtual Academy, I was coordinating Sierra High School's Military Enlistment Preparation Program. But tonight, I wanted to share with you another awesome program that's in our community, in our district, that has been supported by the district for the past seven years. In 2014, I founded the Military Explorers Program Post III. We are a Boy Scouts of America exploring program chartered by the Redlands Office, and we are actually an official 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. And thanks to CAPS Director, some of you might know Mr. Dennis Foreman, now recently retired. He was a great supporter of our program while I was at Sierra High School for the past 10 years. I also want to acknowledge a former administrator, Dr. Rose Barmontre, before she left us as a principal at Sierra High School. She was another amazing administrator that was great in supporting the program and our kids. During my service at Sierra High School, many students asked me about after-school programs because at a continuation high school, there really wasn't many options for them to get involved. And they were a little bit disappointed that they couldn't do some of the things that some of the other students were doing in our district. So with that sort of push, I founded the Military Explorers Program. And since then, we have grown to two active units, one here in San Bernardino, and also one in my hometown of Santa Sinto. In your folders, hopefully you're gonna get them past you in a while. You're gonna get, get a chance to see some of the things we've done, our website, and also some of the names of some of our students in San Bernardino, where they have graduated from and what they are doing now in their military service careers. In 2016, when my daughter was graduating from high school, she had been a student at a local charter school which didn't have a military program, and that's what prompted me to start the Santa Sinto unit. Obviously, with the COVID setback, things took a hit for us, but because of my dedicated explorers are part of this program, we still continue to have virtual meetings. For the entire, almost two years, we were on lockdown at home. I worked with our previous superintendent, Dr. Marston, who shared the same aspirations as I did, the Cradle to Career Program in our district, and helped promote our students to be awesome, successful leaders. Whether or not they decide to join the military, just basically thinking about public service down the road, which is all what we're doing here today. Being a teach, being a teacher in the district these past two decades, I have been honored to be working with some amazing students in our district, administrators, staff, and especially our parents. But I think we can do more for our students. I am here seeking the district's support to help grow the program and make this more available to more of our students in our district, from elementary school through middle school and all the way through post-high school and a high school. I present to you today, just like we have a Police Explorers Program that is sponsored by our school district. I want everyone in the district to know, and the school board to know, that my life has been about service. In 2020, I was also elected to my city council as a council member for the City of Santa Sinto, currently serving as a mayor pro tem for the city. And this is my way that I teach my students to be able to give back to my community, give back to their community because I think it's important that we're able to encourage our students to not only go out, do some awesome things, grow their careers, grow their personal lives, and then come back and rebuild our cities, our towns, and their actual areas that brought them up. I want to thank you very much for your time. Hopefully, you're getting a chance to get those folders so you get a chance to learn a little more, a little bit more about us. And I think we're gonna have a couple of additional speakers that are working as my advisors, my volunteer advisors. And they're gonna speak to you a little bit about what they've experienced as being part of this program and how it has helped them become the people that they are today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, our next public comment, it looks like it's Simeon Miller. I apologize if I have that wrong. Come on up. Or is it Simon?
Simeon.
Simeon, okay, I got it right then. Good. Welcome.
All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board, President Wyatt. Thank you for accepting my request to speak today as an alumni of San Bernardino High School's class of 2017. In fact, Ms. Rosales Medina's son was one of my classmates. Right now, I'd like to talk to all of you about my belief in the importance of providing further opportunities for students in this district that will allow them to become both productive members of our society and leaders within an increasingly competitive and globalized age, which I am concerned that we do not have enough of across the board in many areas. I firmly believe that the Military Explorers of the IE is indeed one of those opportunities. As an alumni and advisor within this program, I can say that I am still benefiting from my previous participation in it as a cadet when I was at San G, and in many more ways than I can have, than I could have ever imagined. I may not be able to list all of those rewards, but I'd like to give you a list of some of the things I've done since promoting from being a cadet. Since my participation in this program, I developed a strong sense of self-confidence, leadership, global citizenship, and more importantly, a strong commitment to public service, which is something we need more of at such a critical juncture in time in our country. This commitment to public service led me to serve as an undergraduate researcher at the Center for the Study of Hate and Extremism at CSUSB, where I assisted in the production of research on anti-Asian hate crimes that was widely cited by members of Congress on both sides of the aisle and led to the passage of the COVID-19 Hate Crimes Act that was signed by President Biden last year. Moreover, I also participated in the U.S. State Department's Virtual Student Federal Service Program, where I was able to work closely with current U.S. diplomats to advance U.S. foreign policy abroad. And I'm very proud of that. As a result, after some time between attending Chaffee College and then moving on to CSUSB, I would graduate this year cum laude with a BA in Political Science, a minor in Islamic and Middle Eastern Studies, a certificate in international relations, and be honored as the 2022 Social and Behavioral Sciences Outstanding Undergraduate Student during our commencement. And since then, I have also been accepted to participate in the Master of Arts in Social Sciences and Globalization Program at CSUSB. So I'm definitely a coyote through and through. None of this, however, would have happened without the explorers and support mentorship as it has provided me and to so many other middle school and high school students throughout the inland empire. I will not be teaching youth in our community about the importance to be engaged and attentive to U.S. foreign policy as it affects them in their daily lives. And that is what we need. We need programs to encourage students to be engaged, to step up because that is what we need in this age where things are changing. And that is what I'm asking this board to do tonight. Create, support the creation of opportunities for our students and make them competitive at a time when globalization is more important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And I just want to say that courage comes in many forms, and you just demonstrated that. We do have a question for you, it looks like, though, so don't run off yet. And, no, come on back. No apology necessary. Usually when we have questions, because you garnered interest when I say that.
I actually, I actually want to commend you and also, Mr. Ayala, because you are our future. And those are some of the issues that are pressing, climate and globalization. And we need strong leaders that are grounded, and not only grounded in their values, but are courageous. And you strike me as a very courageous young man. Am I true? Is that, is that correct?
I would, I would say so.
Oh, yeah? Okay. And so...
Being with, also my involvement with MAU, and I understand the importance of working on issues of peace, security, and sustainable development.
Right, yeah. So those are all, you know, important issues. And how do you profess? What would you, what would you recommend to us to continue the building of our, or giving opportunities to our students?
As a former student of the district, as I stated before, and someone who has associations with the district because I have, my girlfriend's brother is actually gonna start at San G as well. I'm very excited for him to do so. I think one of the things we need to do is think outside the box on what we can provide, you know, maybe not all things have to happen within the district. Explorers, for example, has, is something that did not technically start within the district. So seek, working more within the community on this issue. And that is why I think it's important to work closely with Chief Ayala and me and my other colleague, who will be speaking with you shortly.
Thank you.
All right, thank you again. All right, our next public comment, it looks like Kayla Kelly, Kelly. Kayla Kelly, tongue twister there. Come on up.
Thank you, guys, for allowing me to speak today. I'm very nervous, as you guys can see. Can you hear me? Okay, sorry, I'm very nervous. I am a military explorer. I've been a military explorer since I was 15 years old. I am currently now 19 and a mother and a graduate of Cajon High School. I attend Valley College. My major is business and my minor is cyber. With this program, it actually helped me become more dominant as an African-American woman, actually. I was very quiet at certain points, but now I'm a major in military explorers. And rising up in the rank and everything, it actually helped me realize, like, and become way more mature than I was before. And I do appreciate that with the program. I'm a medic certified. I've been in the fields with, like, camping and things like that. So I really appreciate being able to come out because I have a very strict mom, so she doesn't let me do anything. But Military Explorers was one of those programs that really helped me, especially Cadet Corps, where I needed that determination and that basically just that, not dominance, but like, being able to have that, I can't find the word.
Confidence.
Yeah, confidence and when, not stern, but like, have that. Yeah, I can't find the word right now. That, yeah. So being in the Military Explorers really helped me with that. And I've been in Cadet Corps for about eight years, almost. I've been in Cadet Corps almost eight years, and same with Military Explorers. So I really feel like that would help the kids now, especially with the people that inspired me for a lot. Like, Mr. Tillman inspired me a lot with the BFL, the black student, like, the leaders. And I went, and I really enjoyed it. I've never been to an African-American museum, and I really enjoyed it. Also, today, I met someone who was very inspirational, Ms. Rodriguez. I've never met her before, and today she just, like, really inspired me to really push my program that I have for the kids and make a difference like everybody else has, also, including Mr. Ayala. Helped me, and I do want to be like a provider that way, to help other kids as well. So I want... So I want to make a difference in San Bernardino, especially for my daughter. So I want to create the future in a way better way than it is now. Thank you, guys.
All right, Ms. Kelly, Vice President Tillman has a question or comment, hopefully a question.
What grade were you in, BFL?
BFL, I was, uh, 12th grade. Yeah.
Ms. Carson will be proud of you, and I'm proud of you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
For those of the folks out there that don't know what BFL is, just so we can educate.
It's called Black Future Leaders.
All right, thank you for that.
And we took, well, we take students who have a 3.0 going from ninth grade to, from eighth grade to ninth grade, and they go to Cal State San Bernardino, stay in the dorms for two nights to give them the college exposure.
Thank you, and it looks like we have one more green light. You see the green lights, I mean, stick around, all right?
Okay, sorry.
Um, we have Dr. Flores.
Kayla, I just want to commend you for your commanding presence and your courage and just, you know, your dedication to be of service to our community, our community. And that's what it takes, all of us, you know, serving each other and for the better, you know, for the better of everyone. And so best of luck, and I don't know if we can help you in any way, but just reach out if you need to, and we're here for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, look, look up there, one more green light. We're getting Miss Sevillas.
Not a question, just, I also want to say, you know, very proud of you for coming up here. It's pretty nerve-wracking, especially if it's, you know, your first or second time. Heck, I even get nervous sometimes being up here, so. But I want to commend you, I heard you're a mom. Just wanted to share with you, I was a mom too, at 18, 19, so right around the same age. And I'm really glad to hear that you're in Valley, because that's where I started, and just kind of, you know, moved my way through it. And so, you know, I'm really glad to see when young mothers are still, you know, going back to school and being able to move forward regardless. So there's a lot of opportunities there. There's a lot of great programs. If, hit me up, I can share with you some of the ones that I used, but congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we don't normally do this, but we're coming back around to Dr. Flores, it looks like. Ms. Kaylee?
I just want to commend Chief Ayala.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for being of service, also for being a teacher in our district. There's a lot of you, I know, that help in our district, but it's nice to get to know you. And I, I thank you for coming forward to, you know, educating us on all the different programs and the possibilities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, and, you know, I want to say, this is board member, proud board member opportunity right now. This is great seeing our students, but we're not done yet. I think we have some more students that are going to be coming up here in a little bit. So I want to say my compliments to all of them when they're all done. Our next public speaker is Angel Arrosco, come on up, Angel. I have to say, I'm really impressed when we have more student, former student, public comments than we have from our adults. So this is pretty impressive, actually, very impressive. I would have never done this at your age, just so you know, so you're very brave. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Angel Arrosco, and I'm an incoming senior at San Geronimo High School, and I'm a youth leader with ICUC. As part of our Students for Wellness Center campaign, we continue to push for the implementation of wellness centers at our school campuses. Last, that school year, we surveyed 300 students in the district. Our results show that 81% of the 300 students surveyed rated the current mental health services they received as below average. And 84% of students also rated their experiences with SBCUSD's mental health services as below average. This data simply confirms our ongoing narrative. Research shows that more than one-third of high school students struggled with poor mental health during 2021, which is a sad reality we have continued to push through during the COVID pandemic. As a, as a solution to this ongoing problem, a report by the California Mental Health Resource Oversight and Accountability Commission has called for the implementation of wellness centers for students, which is to say, this is a solution to help address and advocate for student mental health that is being lifted at the state level. We have seen a push for wellness centers in our district throughout California. In the, in the Coachella Valley Unified School District, ICUC advocacy led to the opening of wellness centers at middle schools and high schools earlier, earlier this year. Here, we have seen movement in the administration. We believe that Sierra High School serves as a prime example of how wellness centers should look and operate as they get developed in other schools in the district. We are, while we are thankful for the SBCUSD, it's continued to move forward with the vision that the Student and Wellness and Support Services Department has developed for the 2024, 2025 school year. We urge the district to recognize that students need these resources now, that the implementation of these services is long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arrosco. And our next public comment, looks like Leonardo Peniallosa? Oh, I'm, I'm, Ms. Sevillas, Mr. Tillman wasn't, no, notify me over there, that's his job. Ms. Sevillas, sorry, Mr. Arrosco?
Thank you. So again, first of all, thank you for coming, right, and for being brave and courageous. But I wanted to get a little bit more information. You mentioned a survey that you did. You said it was during distance learning?
Uh, yes, it was, yes.
Okay, and then how many students were surveyed?
300 students.
300, okay, and then who, who took it, or who was all surveyed?
It was primarily mostly high school students from San Geronimo High School, Pacific High School, basically almost every high school in the district, except, I believe, Sierra High School and San Andreas. And, and Indian Springs.
And Indian Springs? And, um, not to put you on the spot, but was there a reason why those three weren't surveyed?
Primarily because we don't have a strong connection to those high schools, so like, our survey didn't reach those students.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, thank you, Ms. Sevillas, thank you, Mr. Arrosco. And again, we'll call up Leonardo Peniallosa. Hopefully, I got that right, and if not, go ahead and pronounce it for me.
Yes, it's Leonardo Peniallosa. Peniallosa?
Peniallosa.
Peniallosa, yeah.
All right, thank you, welcome.
Good evening, board, it is nice to see you. My name is Leonardo Peniallosa, as previously mentioned, and I am a current student at San Bernardino High School, as well as a youth leader with ICUC. As we, as we have advocated for the creation of wellness centers, we have continuously pushed for the allocation of funding from certain pockets of money the school district receives. Since 2020, we have pushed for the allocation of ESER 2 and ESER 3 funding towards bringing facilities on our campuses up to code as the first step towards creation of wellness centers. We know that SBCUSD receives $332 million in federal dollars for ESER 2 and ESER 3 funding. As of May 31st, 2022, the district has expended only $113.5 million of it, leaving $218.6 million still left unspent. Because ESER funding may be used to fund expenses such as providing mental health services and supports, along with one-time capital expenditures such as construction of facilities, we know that this funding could be used to develop the wellness centers at each high school. The school district has until September 30th of 2022 to use ESER 2 funding and until September 30th of 2024 to use ESER 3 funding. Yet, this doesn't fall in line with SBCUSD's vision to start implementing wellness centers during the 24, 25 school year. If the school district truly cares about prioritizing the emotional and mental well-being of its students, you would show this in the prioritization of SBCUSD's budget allocation. With so much over in ESER funds, why has SBCUSD pushed back on using this funding towards wellness centers? We also know that $32 million in LCFF carryover funds, that there is $32 million in LCFF carryover funds, and that there are another, other unallocated funds SBCUSD could potentially invest in wellness centers. Yet, the narrative we are continuously given is that investing in the development of wellness centers isn't possible. The reality is that SBCUSD would figure out the funding if they truly believed that student mental health is a priority. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Leonardo. All righty, our next public comment speaker is Lupe Dolan, come on up. Welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Lupe Dolan. I'm sadly an incoming senior at Pacific High School and a youth leader with ICUC. We have been told time and time again that the school district values student input, yet every time we have presented informed suggestions to the school board, our solutions have been disregarded as unachievable and unrealistic. Despite SBCUSD's efforts in involving students and families as stakeholders through the LCAP meetings, the input we've given on those calls about the importance of wellness centers hasn't actually translated to the development of the LCAP budget. This means that SBCUSD is failing to follow through on the California Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission's call to have students and families engaged at all levels of decision-making. We've continued to advocate for the implementation of wellness centers at every level of district engagement. We've had access to us students, but it seems like our efforts aren't translating over to the actions SBCUSD is actually taking. Research shows that youth involvement in mental health programming leads to actual higher quality and more responsive services. Wherever we have managed to have a seat at the table, such as our involvement in the Swiss department survey table development, has only happened because we pushed for it. We are thankful for the Swiss department's involvement in centering our expertise as students, but we have rarely experienced this treatment in other areas of the school district. We once again pushed for the creation of wellness centers at our Students for Wellness Center event held on April 30th. We also came to the school board meeting held on June 7th to reiterate the importance of allocating funding towards the wellness centers for the 2022 to 2023 school year. We are once again asking SBCUSD to allocate the remaining $218.6 million in ESER 2 and ESER 3 funding and the $32 million in LCFF carryover funding towards constructing wellness centers at all schools in the district, with the long-term goal of maintaining a fully operational wellness center at each school site. Thank you.
All righty, thank you, and I do apologize, I looked down next, I know I have lights on, so I don't know if we had questions, if they were for Leonardo or are they for Lupe?
Lupe.
For Lupe?
Yeah, for Lupe.
Okay, okay. All right, so we'll start with Vice President Tillman, and we'll work our way, I think, to Dr. Daddy Rogers, Dr. Flores, and then me.
Yes, I don't want to elaborate too much, because it's not an agenda, this is public comments, but I, I do, I, I do expect the district to be a lot more collaborative and moving forward than we have been in the past. And I am going to ask at board comments that we have an agenda to actually be precise about how we're going to spend that money, and I think wellness centers will be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman, Dr. Daddy Rogers.
Thank you, and in, first of all, I want to thank all of you. I wanted to wait until I heard from you all, and I applaud your advocacy. We've done it via Zoom, we've done it in person, and you guys are still going, and that is what it's all about. So I want to commend you. You may not know it, or may know it, if you looked at the agenda, we've finally got to a place where we can look at our top 10 priorities, which comes from your input and then us coming together to see what we realistically can do. So tonight, we actually have a discussion on our top 10, and guess what's at the top of the list? Wellness, right? And so we are going to engage in that conversation, and as was said prior, we'll probably be able to set some priorities. I have a note full of questions that we need to understand the funding, what we can and cannot do. So hopefully, if you guys go home a little earlier, you'll be able to reflect back on that discussion and then still give us some information. But I personally want to tell you guys, from your input, this is, you know, mental health is always on my radar every day, this is the work that I do. But because it's constantly being raised and, and voices like yours are given to us, and it's always, you know, something we want to share with those that can do something about it. Week before last, I had the opportunity to speak to Assembly Member Ramos, as well as Speaker Rendon, about the importance of wellness and what we needed. It was like a wish list conversation about school districts and the voices. So I just want you all to know that your voice was carried even that far. And if you haven't engaged, Assembly Member Ramos, he's really doing a fantastic job around understanding this mental health concern so that he can take it even further, and there's designated funding, so we don't have to keep begging and asking and twisting and turning and doing the things that we have to do to try to make it happen, because I suspect there's a huge dollar amount to try to do it throughout the district. I don't know, but we're going to talk about that tonight. But thank you, guys, again, and know that your voice has, has carried forward, even beyond us locally. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Daddy Rogers, Dr. Flores.
I want to commend you again for your perseverance and for not giving up on us and for your research and your due diligence in conducting surveys to get data. And that's what we need, is the data. I would prefer that you all will discuss it, I know I can't bring it up right now, but we need your voices at the table when these decisions are being made. And you should know that our 10 top priorities, the first one, as Dr. Daddy said, is the wellness centers. That's number one for our top 10. And I had the privilege to, to have a tour of the Sierra, our Sierra High School Wellness and Health Center. I was so amazed, and there were kids using it and so forth. And I was really impressed, because their expansion is going to include family, family, mental health, and, and health as well. And so it's just that the mental health, it's also, I mean, you guys can get dental, can get physicals, eye, vision, and it's a turnaround, right? Right at your schools. So our challenge is, how do we plan it out? How do we incrementally, I mean, all the different things that we have to do to do that? But just want to commend you for your perseverance. And hopefully, when you guys are older and finish college, you come back and run for school board. Okay? Gracias.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. I don't know about that last recommendation, but that'll be on you if you decide to. No, just myself, you know, my, my colleagues here have said a lot of what I'd like to say. First of all, I use the word relentless, relentless pursuit that you have had in regards to your passion and for us to increase our services for our social-emotional learning wellness and mental health. And, you know, we've been really, I'm excited about tonight as well. Dr. Daddy Rogers talked a little bit about, we're going to be talking a lot about this. And so I don't expect you to stay all night, because that could be a long time. But, you know, what I would ask you to do is take a look at this presentation, and I don't know if we have copies of it back there, and if we do, I would ask you to take some copies of this with you. Look specifically at goal number three, and it really talks a lot about what you're presenting on tonight, and then also our board top 10, just so you can see the work we, the district has done, and our goal, what we're working towards. Because, you know, your efforts, I don't want you to think they're going on, you know, unheard ears, because they're not, we're listening to you, we're implementing your ideas. But please take a look at this, and you'll see a lot of the work that's happening and going to happen here in the district. So again, thank you for being here. Ms. Rosales Medina.
It is, it is back there, and I definitely would like for you to read it. That way, you're getting updates as well. And then if you're not able to see it here, go on live on YouTube, and that way you can keep up to date with that. And just so you know, it says here, wellness, mental health centers at secondary schools, wellness zen centers, zen gardens at all sites. So these are just some of the questions we're asking. So I know it may be frustrating it's taking so long. It has taken so long, but the reality is, is now we're at a time where we have the funding that we can definitely to try to move thing, move something forward. So I appreciate your perseverance in this and really commend you really educating and educating us as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you again to the three of you, we appreciate you being here. Well, four, three spoke, but all four of you. All right, our next public comment is Ms. Negretti, welcome, Ms. Negretti.
Good evening, board. I see on today's agenda has several contracts for renewal. Some of these contracts are for the organizations that had possible conflicts of interest or provided no measurable academic support for students or did not serve many students to equal the amount of the contract. You pushed Superintendent Doc Irvin into an early retirement from this district due to the CAPS audit. Many of you were unhappy that your friends' contracts would come to an end or that those who are using the facilities for profit would have to do things by the book. On the last two occasions, one of you appeared to be disclosing confidential or privileged information, but to date, no investigation or charges have been filed. I do hope that Mr. Irvin takes legal action for that. Another board member hid behind a passive word salad to make it sound as if the push for, to allow organizations to use the school district facilities is for the passion of helping San Bernardino students. And welcome a call to... And welcome a call to the FBI, as well as, many of you know, the FBI is and has dedicated at investigations as much as the IRS or other entities. For being a board who speaks about transparency, you sure aren't doing much to support it. You had the opportunity to renew the contract for the firm, which was auditing the CAPS vendors, but you opted not to continue with their services. You rushed the investigation, and today you have before you their contracts. As if you don't know, who is the Director of CYDC? Or how many of you are longtime friends with the Director of Power? Are friends with the Director of Acoma? Did none of you read the recommendations of the former CAPS Director Dennis Gorman? Or is that why he is now a former employee? Because he wasn't supposed to make honest recommendations? Did any of you read the CAPS Governance Report? Or the Extended Learning Program Report? Or perhaps some of you did, and that is what led to Barbara Flores to at the expense of the LRR attorneys? I did see those fees. Those are paid by taxpayers. By contracting the attorneys, she increased their bill. I don't know if that is the norm. Do you all have access to the school attorneys? Is that the board policy that any of you can use their services, but when it comes to voting for independent audits, the cost is too much? The downfall of your decision is that our children will not get to reap the benefits of the academic plan the Superintendent Irvin was proposing. And for what? So the saturation of nepotism and chronism can continue? For years, the school board has worked under the understanding of scratching each other's backs. You support the organizations of each other's friends, and in return, your friends will walk for you, your friends will knock on doors, and they will help you get reelected. And it had been an expectation of an automatic renewal without accountability, without any proof that children are actually improving academically, that qualified individuals are rendering the services as outlined in those contracts. To add insult to the disservice caused by your actions, most of you believe that having the Assistant Superintendent serve in a rotation as the Superintendent is something great. When it was shared that most of them, with the expectation of, with the exception of Mr. Solins, are a product of San Bernardino or have been in the district for many years to make that appear to be a beneficial quality to serve as superintendent, that is not something that would benefit the children enrolled in the school district. But it's certainly a quality to maintain the same old, same old nepotism and chronism that passing and approving anything that you and your friends' organization wants. You certainly are not representing the best interests of students. If you were, you would have given Superintendent Doc Irvin the support to implement the academic plan he proposed. You would also have agendized the repeated request by parents to have a forum regarding the adverse reactions of the COVID vaccine, which you are now, which are now available in the documents that were released. Your decisions should support and represent all students, yet your decisions and implementation of policies continue to be one-sided and not just for one side of students, it also has to be for the staff. You continue to support the weekly testing of unvaccinated staff while the information backed by the science has proved that the vaccinated and boosted, triple, quadruple, stupple boosted can carry COVID and spread it and don't have to test unless they want to. As the new school year begins, I hope that you will not approve the contracts before you that were found to be, have, found to be or have conflict in decisions that lacked the student, that lacked the enrollment or were found in conflict. And you will file all proper agencies to initiate investigations that have been disclosed through those reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Negretti, and it looks like Ms. Rosales Medina may have a question for you.
It's more of a concern, and that's fine. So I've never seen this report that you're speaking of, and so the fact that, I'm kind of concerned that, where do you, how is she even, how did you get that information? That I was not even able to, I have not seen, so.
I don't know why you're worried about how I got it, you should have asked for it. But today's decision, today's decision will decide who and against who I file with. Trust me.
Do thorough investigation, no, I agree, I agree, and you'll most likely find, and they'll find nothing, but that's okay. But I do want to just make sure the district, we're finding out what's going on.
Understand, but we shouldn't engage in conversation on this topic.
Roll the dice, if you think I have found anything, roll the dice.
And she has a right to public comment. Thank you, Ms. Negretti. All right, Ms. Cunningham, is that it for public comments? Any virtual comments?
Yes, we have three virtual comments. The first one is Kate Walford. If you're available, please unmute.
Welcome, Ms. Walford, if you're here.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, welcome, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kate Walford, and I represent Public Advocates, a civil rights organization. We partner with and support Inland Congregations United for Change and are here to support ICUC's request for allocating funding towards school-based wellness centers. It is well-established that we're facing a student mental health crisis, which has only been further aggravated by the pandemic. According to the CDC, more than one in three high school students in the United States experienced poor mental health in 2021, with even higher rates for LGBTQIAU. According to another May 22, 2022 study by the National Center for Education Statistics, 70% of public schools have reported an increase in the percentage of their students who are seeking mental health care services at school, and 76% have reported an increase in staff voicing concerns about their students' mental health. Despite the continued advocacy from the community, as you heard here tonight from ICUC Youth, the district has consistently claimed that it has not been able to identify funding to construct and implement wellness centers. However, there are currently several funding sources that the district could use to invest in constructing and implementing school-based wellness centers now, and we urge the district to use these sources for this purpose. First, unallocated Esser funding is a critical opportunity for the district to invest in these imminently needed wellness center facilities for youth. As of the May 31st board meeting, the district has expended only $113.5 million of these funds, leaving $218.6 million unspent. Under the provisions of the American Rescue Plan and Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Acts, all of this Esser funding may be used to fund one-time expenses, and it may also be used for capital expenditures, such as the construction of facilities. The existence of these significant one-time funds that must be spent within the next two years and may be used on construction of facilities is the perfect opportunity to build these school-based wellness centers that students urgently need and have been requesting for years. The district also received $21.8 million in concentration add-on funding to increase staffing for 2223. However, the 2223 LCAP only allocates $19.8 million for this purpose, that's under Goal One, Action 10, leaving $2 million in concentration add-on funds unallocated. This $2 million is another opportunity to fund wellness center staffing at schools beginning this year in 2223. Additionally, the district also has $32 million in unspent LCFF carryover funding from last year, which many of you agreed to commit to wellness center implementation, but which is not reflected in the adopted version of the LCAP for 2223. Lastly, due to the state budget surplus, the governor's May revised budget indicates a significant increase in LCFF funds to be allocated to school districts. It does not appear that the district has included these additional funds in the 2223 LCAP. This unallocated funding is yet another opportunity to fund wellness centers by amending the LCAP and budget to include funding for the construction of wellness centers on all campuses. The San Bernardino community has been advocating for the creation of these school-based wellness centers for years to meet the urgent need for student mental health care. We urge you to respond to this advocacy and commit to allocating the funding we have identified for the construction of wellness center facilities, moving towards the long-term goal of fully operational wellness centers at every school site. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walford. All right, next public comment, Ms. Cunningham.
Our next comment is from Victor Leung. If you're available, please unmute.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Victor Leung, and I am the Director of Education Equity for the ACLU of Southern California. I am providing public comment to stand with Inland Congregation United for Change, or ICUC, and all of the students and community members who are requesting wellness centers in San Bernardino City Unified. As we all know, our youth are facing unprecedented mental health challenges as we slowly recover from the pandemic. Study after study show that they are facing higher rates of depression, trauma, stress, anxiety, and even suicidal thoughts. Most students don't have access to mental health services to address these needs outside of schools, so it is critical that the district invest in supports and interventions for its students in school. Students cannot recover from the pandemic, let alone graduate and thrive without these critical services. As community members have long advocated for, school-based wellness centers are the most effective way for the district to provide those services. Report by the California Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission, a state agency, has called for students to implement wellness centers during the pandemic. The commission described how such centers could address young people's trauma and mental and physical needs by offering psychological services, basic medical care, and other critical resources. Research also shows that school health programs and school connectedness had a positive effect on academic performance, and school mental health services are linked to many positive outcomes in alignment with this district's LCAP goals, including increased academic performance and school engagement. Many school districts have already successfully implemented school-based wellness centers across the state. For example, San Francisco Unified provides wellness centers that address trauma, immigration stress, poverty, and family dysfunction. Placer County created five school-based wellness centers that supplement existing school-based mental health professionals with additional school social workers and family, youth, and community liaisons. Dublin High School in Alameda County hosts a wellness center that offers mental health services from school counselors and provides a home for student-run organizations where teenagers can talk candidly with their peers about their emotional pain. In nearby Coachella Valley, as our student leaders mentioned earlier tonight, community advocacy resulted in the district opening wellness centers at middle schools and high schools in spring of 2022. Here in San Bernardino City Unified, Sierra High School has already established a school-based wellness center. Sierra High School provides a great example that the district can learn from in expanding similar wellness centers to middle and high schools all across the district. And importantly, as Kate mentioned, the district has received a large influx of funding in the past several years and even in the current school year, and so it has the funding available to fund wellness centers right now. Specifically, it has $218 million in federal COVID relief funds that are not, that are not spent yet, in addition to $32 million in LCFF carryover funds. Just a fraction of those dollars will be enough to fund a wellness center at each school. The San Bernardino City community has been calling for the district to implement wellness centers for more than a decade. Our students need them more than ever. Please commit to funding the construction and implementation of wellness centers at all San Bernardino City school, unified schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Leung. All right, next public comment, Ms. Cunningham.
And our last speaker is Mia Cooper. If you're available, please unmute.
Welcome, Ms. Cooper.
Good evening, Board and Cabinet members.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight to say thank you to Ms. Rodriguez, excuse me, Dr. Rodriguez, Dr. Lundin, Special Ed Team, for putting on the Work Academy Celebration last month. It was an honor, and I needed to say thank you for it. The kids really did appreciate it, and to see the kids come together and talk about what they're going to do upon graduation. A lot of them were going to Valley, and a lot of them are on the dean's list. And for some board members who may not know what the Work Academy is, it was some of our Special Ed students who was transitioning out of high school, going to Valley, and they had some extra support, and there were some things that they had to apply to and follow, so very strict, I would say very strict rules, but it was some very good ones. But they all are making hope happen for our community and for our school district, and I just felt they needed to be honored tonight. And also, the ones that have made it happen, for them to be honored as well, because we really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper, and definitely thank you for the appreciation of such a great program. All right, Ms. Cunningham, I believe that was it.
That's all.
All right, thank you, folks, for your public comments. We'll move on to 3.0, closed session, 3.1, closed session, public comments. Are there any public comments?
No comments.
All righty, we will adjourn to closed session, 3.2. All right, folks, we're going to reconvene from closed session, go on with 4.0, action reported from closed session, 4.1, approval of coordinator multilingual programs. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the appointment of the following employee: Victor Portillo, Coordinator, Multilingual Programs, effective date, work, year, and SAR to be determined, funding source 261 at 80%, and funding source 419 at 20%. I thought we needed a motion, didn't we? I thought we needed a motion and a second. That's what I was waiting on, help me if I'm wrong.
Moved.
All right, it's been moved by Ms. Rosales Medina? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Ms. Rosales?
Yeah.
No, I didn't, actually, I was looking down, but I didn't hear it clearly, my apologies.
So we're moving to appoint or to move on with the process for Mr. Portillo, right?
Well, we need a motion to approve, then a second, and then a discussion, then a vote. So it was moved by Ms. Rosales? Is there a second? I'll second, just to move it forward. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion does not carry. Two yays, three nays, one not present to vote. We will move on to 4.2, approval of high school vice principal for Cajon High School.
Moved.
Second.
All right, be resolved, the Board of Education approves appointment of the following employees: Elizabeth Ontavetos Hernandez, high school vice principal, Cajon. Effective date, work, year, and S R to be determined. Funding source 035. It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. Congratulations to, let me make sure I get her name, Elizabeth Ontavetos Hernandez, our new high school vice principal, Cajon High School. We'll move on. Is she here? Just to make sure. All righty, thank you. 4.3, be resolved, the Board of Education approves settlement agreement number, just a number, SS-21/22-02, an amount of $35,700. Board of Education authorizes purchasing director to sign all related documents.
Moved.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Dr. Rogers, I don't have yours yet.
All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 4.4. Students recommended for suspension or expulsion, excluding mandatory offenses, but remanded to youth court for other means of corrections.
Moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 4.5. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the following student was recommended for expulsion, but expulsion was deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence, and/or debalability of other means of corrections in compliance with Education Code 48900. Therefore, although they are recommended for expulsion, expulsion is not granted.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 4.6. Be resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the readmission of the following students with identification numbers as indicated below to schools of San Diego Unified School District in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code 48900.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Is there any discussion? All right, let's vote. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 4.7, other closed session action. There is no other action. Moving on to 5.0, reports by union organizations. 5.1, San Bernardino Teachers Association. All right, no report on 5.1. 5.2, California School Employees Association. There is a report. You're on mute. You're muted.
How about you?
There we go.
Great. Good evening. How's everybody doing?
Doing great, thank you.
Need to volume down just a little bit.
A little bit loud.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Haven't seen y'all for about a month, so just a real quick update. It's been pretty quiet on our end. We are back in negotiations with the district. Last time we had meetings about that was in May, so we're excited to get started and get back on track and hopefully be able to finish soon, sooner than last year. Also, we wanted to give a huge shout out to payroll. If you guys didn't hear, they took on the huge task of getting all of us our retro, certificated, classified, everybody on the 15th, and they did it, and everyone's super happy. Thank you so much for like the summer bonus. Besides that, obviously thanking everyone at the warehouse for all of their hard work, because they've been working through the hot weather and everything, so we definitely appreciate them for getting things delivered and taking care of everything that's going on to keep our sites running, along with the MNO department as well. Besides that, we're pretty quiet, just getting ready for the school year to start.
All righty, we're looking forward to it as well. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you so much. Y'all have a nice evening.
Take care. Thank you very much. All right, 5.3, Communication Workers of America. No report. 5.4, Samuel School Police Officers Association. No report. Very good. 6.0, reports and presentations. 6.1, 2022, 2023, district goals and presentations. And Board, really looking forward to this presentation. I know there's been a lot of questions about what are our goals? What is our plan? What are we doing? Well, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to staff and give us a nice look at what we're doing for next coming year.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt, and good evening to the Board. Board Vice President, Mr. Tillman, Board members. As we move closer to the start of the new school year and as we move through this transition in leadership, we would like to provide the Board and the public with an overview of our goals for the 2022-23 school year. We understand, you know, with some of the transition, there's uncertainty, but we wanted to provide information to demonstrate that the work continues and we're focused and committed as a leadership team, as well as a district, on continuing to move that work forward together. So, next slide, please. So with this, we'll take a moment to review our objectives for this evening. Building from much of the work from last year, Cabinet's put together a plan to continue to move forward and discussing how that plan will intersect with the Board's top 10 that we'll discuss in this presentation, but also is moving forward for approval by the Board later on in the agenda. Also recognizing the ongoing needs of our students, we'll discuss the plan for providing additional supports for our school sites. And then lastly, we'll review our key metrics that we're focusing on to improve student outcomes and measure our performance. Next slide. So over the last few months, the Board has worked to identify and prioritize their top 10 priorities, which the Board will take action on a little later on in the agenda. We can see from this list of priorities that the Board is focused on literacy, particularly early literacy, biliteracy, and financial literacy programs, providing more support to school sites, college and career readiness, health and wellness, and academic success. So as the team discusses the goals and priorities for the coming year, we'll identify the areas that will intersect with the Board's top 10 priorities. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Anna Applegate, who will discuss our first goal, and she will be coming to us virtually. Ms. Applegate?
Thank you, Mr. Solins. And yes, Board, we're excited to bring our goals back to you. And just as a reminder, if you can remember, we had five overarching goals. They were academic achievement, college and career success, social-emotional learning, and family engagement, and finally, health and safety. Those goals remain the same, because those were goals that were crafted with all of our different teachers, parents, administrators. Many of our different people in our organization helped us to craft the goals, so we are moving forward with these goals. The first one, academic achievement. We are really going to strengthen the district's teaching and learning culture by delivering targeted professional development for administrators, certificated and classified staff, and we're really focusing on reading, mathematics, and language development. And in order to do that, we want to make sure that our curriculum is aligned and it has a strong data literacy piece. As you know, we are really concerned with early literacy and recapturing some of the learning that our students had, that have, last couple of years has gone by, and we are very concerned making sure that our youngest readers are the ones that are able to capture some of that learning. And with that, we want to implement the universal design for learning, which is very inclusive, and it will make sure that all of our kids' needs are met. We are doing universal access in small groups, so we're making sure that they're getting intervention wherever they need it. And we're implementing the multi-tiered system of support, which includes three different tiers of support for all students. And then we know that through Hattie's work, collective teacher efficacy is one of the highest, most impactful things that we can do to increase student achievement. So we are going to continue with our teacher leadership teams. We're going to continue with our teacher advisory councils, making sure that we have our educators at the table, really giving us feedback and working with us as partners. And through all of this, we want to continue with our professional learning communities, because we know that working collaboratively with all of our different partners is hugely important. And you can see here the intersection with the Board top 10 that we are going to be addressing with academic achievement. Early literacy, as you can see, A through G, which continues to be a huge priority for our Board and for us as well. And biliteracy, that's been mentioned quite a bit. We will continue to work on biliteracy and expanding those programs. And then also our grading policy, addressing our Ds and Fs and making sure that we are working with our educators on grading as well. Next slide. Our second goal, we are going to continue with all of the work for college and career that Dr. Escaval has been doing with the team. Dr. Sudha Ankatesan is still heading up the college and career team, as she has been for this past year, and she will continue to strengthen the college and career readiness for all of our students by ensuring across, I'm sorry, access rigorous and relevant course content and cutting-edge career pathway opportunities. We plan to expand all of that and continue. So we are going to continue with our pilot, our college and career success plan. We're going to continue with providing languages other than English. Board, you did hear and you approved our foreign language FTE, so that we can continue to give some more offerings there. And we are developing a Board policy, as you well know. We had brought it to you, and we are still working on it through the policy committee so that we can bring that back to the Board. We're going to expand our dual enrollment. I know that that's increased quite a bit. And expand our pathways. Again, we're going to continue with some different approaches and strategies in our grading policy. And I know, Board, you have asked for financial literacy quite a bit, and we are going to be expanding that. It's currently being offered at two high schools, and so we are working to have an A through G course-approved class and also expand it to many more high schools as well. And you can see also the intersection here with the Board's top 10. You've also asked about cybersecurity and game design pathways, so we are working on that. I mentioned financial literacy. We continue with A through G. We know that that's a huge objective for us. Dual enrollment, and then the reduction of Ds and Fs, which you've been talking about as well. And Board, you will be hearing a little bit later also about how we are really shifting the centrally support, the central support that we had discussed earlier into more site-based support. So you will get some more information about that and how we'll be accomplishing all of this by assisting our schools. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Rodriguez, I believe, for the third goal.
Thank you, Mrs. Applegate. As we heard from our students today, we know they're crying out for additional services around wellness. And when we think about wellness, we think about social-emotional learning. And many people, and this is more for our viewing audience, social-emotional learning is very complex, but it deals with students' self-awareness of emotions, their strengths, how to set goals for themselves, how to manage themselves, and how they interact with others. And so we want to make sure that SEL, as we term it, is embedded in our district curriculum in the first teaching. So as you look at our overarching goal, we will strengthen the district's social-emotional and wellness culture to create enabling conditions that support the whole child's engagement and fosters a growth mindset. We know that students have undergone a horrendous pandemic over the last two years and have experienced much loss. And so we want to make sure that our students are, we know who they are, being resilient and working to grow their mindset. And how we're going to do that is to continue to develop the capacity of our staff with providing more professional development, working stronger and more aligned with our ed services team to embed SEL strategies into the Tier One programming in How Teachers Teach, building our climate and culture, as well as making sure that students have the interventions that they need to be successful through our MTSS system of supports. We also are looking at providing additional support to our teachers and staff around building trust, managing stress, equity in belonging, and resilience and efficacy. It's important that our staffs are also trained and also are aware of their own social-emotional needs as they work to bring out the best in our students. The second objective is to develop a student's SEL capacity, and we heard today that student voice is hugely important, and we agree. And so we want to be able to build opportunities for our students to engage more by being very deliberate in providing direct instruction of SEL curriculum by our teachers, utilizing SEL-aligned bully prevention through all of our counselors. We want to make sure that our kids feel safe and heard and valued and feel that they belong in our schools. That sense of belonging is huge. And then also, as I mentioned earlier, the strength that we have in collaborating with ed services to ensure that we have integration of SEL in our academic lessons through instructional practices and content. So for example, compare and contrast, having an argument, persuasive points of view, looking at characters and development and what are the things that they bring. So those are all very important, as well as goal-setting for our students. As how it intersects with the Board's top 10, we heard very loudly from our students about wellness centers. And I want to make sure that we're very clear. The district is in favor of wellness centers as well as wellness programming. All of our students have access to many wellness programs that are being provided at Sierra High School. Those programs are also provided at every school in our district. They just don't necessarily have a place, but the services are being provided. Next slide, please. Our fourth goal is family engagement, and we know that students need to have that support system. And we hear from our community and from our parents the importance that we engage them not as just, you know, the courtesy nod, but really authentically engage in partnering with us to be able to bring out the best in their child, as well as looking at how we can support the family in making sure that they have healthy relationships between adults and students, or their children, as well as adult to adult. That family efficacy is very important. We need to be able to strengthen our home and school connection. So some of our objectives for family engagement is we, last year, we came up with the three-year plan. This year, we're going to be implementing that plan. We're going to continue to develop structures for effective family engagement. We actually have our back-to-school extravaganza meeting with over 1,500 families, providing services to not only the students but to the families. That's only one example of what those structures look like. And we want to continue to develop and implement a system for identifying and training parents. You will hear later on the district's plan to hire additional parents who will work in our schools to be that parent liaison, that parent connection, to again, build trust, have faith, and be able to continue to partner in a strong way. And we know that when families are strong and students have places at home to do their homework, when we have environments and homes that really promote literacy and promote excellence, it's going to affect every aspect of that student's life. And so when we look at the intersection of family engagement to the Board top 10, it literally hits every single one of them. We need our parents to be able to support and be aware of the different initiatives, be aware of the graduation requirements, as well as the opportunities for dual enrollment. and also understand the value of biliteracy. And so we're very excited to be able to, looking at family engagement, to be able to meet the board's top 10 utilizing our families. Next slide, and I'll pass it over to Mr. Precy.
Thank you. Actually, before I go into that, I'm going to go off script and just say, you know, kudos to Chief War and Officer Ayala and that program that he provided and his students. It's outstanding. I used to be a part of Sea Cadets when I was in middle and high school. We used to do our drills over on Norton Air Force Base on the tarmac. And, you know, have, being a part of that organization, provide clarity, direction and discipline to a youth that definitely needed it, myself. So awesome job to him and his team. But for the health and safety. So thank you for the opportunity to share the health and safety goals. And over the last two years and in our preparation for this school year, we've continued to adjust, pivot and work through all the changes in guidance and regulations when it comes with COVID. We've done this with the focus of providing healthy, clean and safe schools for our students, which is critical in their educational success. And we will also work to ensure that we improve the physical appearance of our schools, increasing pride and promoting positive behaviors with our students and staff. As you know, we've talked about this earlier in the year, but we've embarked on a district-wide custodial initiative, which will standardize custodial practices, establish uniform expectations and provides for consistent delivery of service levels for all facilities. This initiative will improve the quality of training, support and will afford the district the ability to move resources as the school sites' needs arise. As also just a few weeks ago, we had all-site custodians participating in training seminars at Bing Wang as an example of what this initiative is doing for the school district. But over at Bing Wang Elementary, whereas in cooperation with the school site administration, MNO held training sessions in two different wings of classrooms in multiple subjects. And our custodians were able to move from one classroom to another, determining based off of what their individual needs were and what they're looking for training on. And we covered topics such as chemicals, dilution ratio, five-star criteria, vacuum cleaner maintenance, top-to-bottom cleaning, proper restroom and classroom cleaning, as well as many other topics. In addition to the training, we've also completed a custodial handbook, which will be a quick reference guide for custodial staff relating to technical applications, custodial skills, quality standards and safety protocols. This is actually a really good document. And it was also created in collaboration with our custodians and our union partnership. So we got the impacted parties and the folks that will be performing the work involved in the process of creating that standardized custodial handbook. In order to improve our maintenance and asset management of our schools, we've also implemented the five-star inspection process. We've performed over 200 inspections since implementing that process. And this is providing us, now we have our benchmark year, now we're going to be able to monitor the performance of our quality of oversight, training, support and equipment, just to make sure that we have consistency in our deliverables. This process will ensure our schools are continually improving and will be performed three times a year so we can track the site's progress, learn where there are opportunities to improve our support, build on successes, but most importantly, and this is really the focus of what we're trying to accomplish, recognize the achievements. We've also implemented effective health and safety programs that are aligned with the ever-changing, evolving guidance and requirements. The district will continue to share this information through multiple communication platforms and our safety department will continue to work closely with our counterparts in the county and state Department of Public Health and Office of Emergency Services. Through these initiatives, we will strengthen our operational and communication systems to provide a safer, healthier and more welcoming educational learning environment for our students and staff. I'll turn it over to Dr. Punches.
Thank you, Mr. Precy. First, I wanted to start by thanking the board for their guidance and direction with the top 10, much appreciated, and your confidence in this staff for moving forward with innovative strategies to continue properly educating our scholars. And as we work on these strategies and these overarching goals, we can't forget about the people that we're going to need to make sure that these things come to fruition and are done well. And it is our goal in human resources, in collaboration with the Personnel Commission, to build an empowered workforce for this community. And as you all know, San Bernardino City Unified Community is a very unique community that is in need of people that are service-minded, committed to San Bernardino City and have a sense of purpose. And so what we're working on right now to make sure that that happens is a recruitment and retention system that values inclusivity and diversity, what our board values as well, and a clearly articulated professional growth system or professional growth system so that when our educators and our employees enter the district, they know what their growth points are or where they can head in their career. That's a part of retention. And expanded, high-quality training, including coaching and mentoring, which we were just awarded for, but expanding that to our classified employees as well. And also progressive intervention systems that provide support to our employees from day one. And some of the positions that we'll be working towards bringing to our sites for direct support, as you know, Board, our attendance assistance will help continue our efforts to get our scholars into school and stay there, working with our families, our parent volunteer workers under the leadership of Dr. Rodriguez and her team, looking at bringing parent volunteer workers to all of our school sites, our MTSS resource teachers to make sure that they coordinate site-level access to tiered supports for all of our scholars to meet their needs, additional counselors to meet the social emotional needs and positive behavior supports for our scholars at our large elementary schools, bringing back elementary vice principals at some of our highest-need schools so that we can have a pathway into leadership so that strong leadership is continued to be a focus here in our district. Health aides as well for our specialized schools like Sierra, Santa Andreas, Anderson and Harmon for that continued health and wellness piece. Link learning program specialists, as you know, college and career, as you know, CTE, as you know, career pathways is very important to you, Board, important to us as well, NHR. Foreign language teachers at both middle and high school had soft to our multilingual department, partnering with HR over the years to bring more in for the A through G completion and requirements so our scholars can head off to college. And then finally, intervention staffing for our focused schools in collaboration with the Personnel Commission, instructional aides, EA3s, and then HR resident guest educators to provide that extra layer of support for those scholars needing those tiered interventions. And so HR working collaboratively with all other divisions so that we have coherence and moving forward with these goals, Board, that we know that are important to you. And I'll hand it over to, I believe, Mrs. Applegate.
We have actually Dr. Cleveland, who will be presenting. Thank you. Good evening, Board, Cabinet. What you see before you is what we are proposing as our key performance indicators. The KPIs that you see before you represent what we will see on the California School Dashboard and our local indicators, which are based on our district-wide assessment system. Within the California School Dashboard, our KPI, Culture, Perspective, Preview, covered this evening, these were our scholar ELA, CASP, Smarter Balance, R3.
Are you breaking up? You might want to turn your video off.
Freezing.
Michelle, turn your video off so we can hear you. You're spotty.
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so the that are present, both are academic and our culture. So you will represent the CAP or the 3 through 1. And we'll see K related to our, as well as the certification rate, our overall graduation rate, our college and career, and then absenteeism and suspension. All of these are low.
Sorry, Michelle, you're still breaking up. I don't know if Anna can step in.
Well, as you can see, Board, as we're kind of dealing with technical difficulties, you'll see that the indicators that are on this slide are.
New baseline data for most of our KPIs is not yet available and is likely to become official and public in the coming weeks. When we will be able to provide you with updated growth metrics. We likely aim to, for example, in by 10,000 years for such classification, suspension and.
Thank you.
Can we look you with?
Okay, so we'll move to the next slide. Thank you, Michelle. Sorry, it was a little spotty, but we appreciate sticking in. And so with that, that is the end of our presentation. We'll take questions, but before we take questions, we thought we would end on a high note. And so we have a very brief video that I think will warm everyone's heart.
Have you heard? School starts Monday, August 1st. Yes. School starts August 1st. For kids for San Bernardino on highlight. Mark your calendar. It's time to learn. Be on time. Make your family know. The first day of school is almost here. See you, class, August 1st.
So we'd like to thank the Communications Department for putting that together and ending on a high note. And with that, we will turn it over to the board if there are any questions. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Saun, and thank you, staff, for the presentation. And we know technical difficulties do happen, and thank God they didn't happen when the students were on, so that was nice. We'll start, and I do apologize on if Mr. Tillman was watching. Ms. Abios, I know you were first, but who was, let's be on the honor system here. Who was next? We'll start down there? We'll start with Gwen and work our way back, or? All right, we'll come this way then, if that's okay. Well, all right. Ms. Abios, we know we got you right, so we'll have you go first, Ms. Abios.
Like me. Thank you so much for the presentation and thank you to the Communications Department for that wonderful video, very much needed. So yeah, I just have a couple of questions on the key metrics page specifically. So I know that these are our end-of-year goals or metrics, I should say, what we're going to be looking at to see whether or not we've met the goals. I'm just wondering, you know, at the last conference that we went to, there's something that stuck with me, that sometimes this data can be autopsy kind of data.
Oh, yes, I know what you're talking about.
Right? So it's like we're trying to, we're trying to dissect, you know, like what the, what the person died from? It's retrospective data, right? And so I guess what I'm trying to say is, do we have midpoints and smaller, shorter-term goals, you know, within this? And, you know, will we be presented on those and are they scheduled? Do we have dates?
Yeah, and you're exactly right. I think these are, these are end goals. I think along the way, as we work with our, with our students, we have assessment data, we have checkpoints that sort of lead us to those, the end game as it relates to those goals. So yes, we will be providing the board with that information and updates on that.
Do we have like an estimated, like a calendar already kind of established for that?
Yes, we do. We are NWA assessments, submit, place in, and we have another, but then all assess uses out in between. So.
Yeah, sorry, Anna, you're cutting in and out. But to the question that Ms. Abios asked, yes, we can certainly provide the board with a calendar and so you can see, you know, at a glance, when you should expect that information and sort of those, those touch points and check-ins.
Yeah, and I think if I, if I understand correctly, like I think what Ms. Applegate was trying to say was that, that NWEA does have, you know, that fall, winter, spring, which is great, but I'm also, you know, obviously CASP, we can't have midpoints for that, but the other ones, right? The English learner progress, reclassification, if we can create, if we don't already have like a mid checkpoint or, you know, where we're getting that, those points like at least three times a year. So, yeah.
We will work, we'll take it back to the team and we will work on something and bring it back to the board.
Is that it, Ms. Abios? All right, we'll move our way down. And Mr. Tillman, Vice President Tillman?
Yes, you know, and I know we're coming up on the beginning of the new school year, so I know things are busy, but I really think at some point, we should have a special meeting to talk about the budget and where we're at with the money and then specific items in terms of what we have allocated for spending. I know like, for instance, the, we, some time back, we gave extra money for the athletics department so that they could buy uniforms for, make sure all the students get free uniforms. So it was like $2 million. I don't know whether this is the time to do it, but even in terms of the wellness center, out of the extra money, is it practical and can we, are we setting aside money for those programs? So I think if we had, I think we should have a special meeting just to talk about where we're talking about assigning those dollars.
Absolutely. And so a couple of things that are coming up, so I'm just thinking of timing for it. So in August, we will be bringing back to the board a 45-day budget revision that will incorporate items that were included in the state enacted budget that occurred after we adopted our budget. So that will represent some funds that aren't previously spoken for. And then when we close our books, we will come back to the board in September to present our unaudited actuals, and that will also present unspent dollars, especially when we think about the Ezra dollars. So from a timing standpoint, I think we can, we can tackle it twofold. We'll present information, but I think we can schedule a special board meeting. I think after unaudited actuals, where we can actually lay out not only the new dollars, but also as we close the books, the unspent or available dollars so that we can discuss board priorities.
Just so clarity, we did give teachers a stipend this year, as usual, for supplies?
Correct. That is correct.
And then, I don't know, has there been talk about the extra money for the athletics department to make sure they have new uniforms for all the schools and for the bands?
Yeah, so what, so we, we always provide that funding. There's some discussions and part of it is, as we have additional resources to augment the monies that we always provide, we have a list of needs that the athletics department has provided, not only from a facility standpoint, but a request for a, an augmentation of their base budget funding.
Looking at doing that?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Just for the record, if we're looking at a special board meeting, we need consensus on the special board meeting.
Exactly, I agree.
Yeah, because we do have a couple of things coming up. I just want to make sure we clarify that on special board meetings.
Thank you, President.
We have some workshops we want to do still.
It's true.
So we got to, you know, as a board, we got to kind of prioritize those meetings. But, you know, anytime we want to have a special board meeting, we need consensus.
I agree.
So on that one, we're going to need to ask for consensus if that's the case. I'm going to. I'm going to-
Do you have dates in mind, or, I mean, when?
Well, because we have a couple of other workshops still that we were planning. I think it needs to be relative with the 45-day budget revision.
So I would recommend, the 45-day budget revision will be upon us soon. I would recommend, as we close the books, because that will also represent the picture of where we finished.
So approximately, what month? And so we have an idea?
I think we could do it in September, following our un-ordered actuals.
Thank you.
Board, are we okay with that? All right, so, very good. All right, Dr. Flores, right here. Sorry, I missed Ms. Rosales Medina, but you're next.
Oh, you're next. Oh, I'm next, okay.
Sorry about that, I missed it.
I want to commend the Cabinet for outlining the goals and intersecting our Board top 10. It was very brilliant. And it intersects it, and also, we can see where we're going in all the goals. So I just wanted to commend you all for that. It's very, 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 I mean, it's clear and succinct, but yet I know you have more details behind it. Mrs. Applegate, I know that you have a big lift, and your whole team and your division. And I just also want to commend you, because I've read the research on universal design, universal access, and the multi-tiered system, which is really, really on-spot. And, you know, the collective efficacy of teachers through leadership, teacher leadership teams, teacher advisory councils is so important, because it is the teachers that see the kids every day. And they are the ones that, you know, need our support and the knowledge. So I just want to commend you with that. And also, our college and career success. I know we've been moving along, and I just want to commend, you know, the Secondary Department as well for continuing their work. And also, I know that Dr. Doughty, Rogers, and I also wanted financial literacy in there, and so you've included it. That's so important. And continuing the A-through-G high school graduate minimum requirement, and including ethnic studies, because that is one of the Board policies that we passed. I think we passed it before you came onboard, Ms. Sabios, but that's integrated into it. And then, Dr. Rodriguez, I know your team is just incredible in terms of wellness, and, you know, health centers, and mental health, and so forth. And I'm glad to hear that we have these services at all our high schools. We just need a location, and that's going to be a lift to figuring out, because Sierra's is a model, the one that I was given a tour of. And I think we need to figure out how to improve or use their model for the rest of our schools. And of course, family engagement is so key. It's really, really important. And we need to reach more of our families. And hopefully, that's our target, so. And then, for health and safety, thank you, Mr. Puceys. I only have one question for you. I know you probably have it, but do we have a troubleshooting protocol for fixing facility issues and the timelines that we have? And do we have enough manpower, women power, person power to do it?
Yes, we do. And the facility issues, could you be a little bit more specific?
I can hear you.
I'm sorry, could you be a little bit more specific on the facility issues? I just-
Oh, you know, if the water is not clean, if-
Oh, yes, of course.
If there's leaks in the roof, if we have, you know, pavement that's, that, you know, is waiting for accidents to happen, cement, things like that.
Yes, actually, with the implementation of our five-star program, that's actually what we're looking at. So we're looking at the entire asset management, so the entire building, so it's not custodial or ground-specific, which is what some of our inspections were prior. This is more aligned with the state standard, where it's looking at all the categories.
Does that include cleaning rooms? Because I know, I got complaints, and I know we were in COVID, and coming back from COVID, that sometimes, you know, the rooms were not vacuumed, or swept, or mopped on a regular basis. And that was because custodians were getting COVID, you know, there weren't enough people. So have we mitigated that?
We have, yeah. Again, with this new program that we've instituted, we're able to move some resources from one location to another, which we have actually employed quite often during the summer period. So some school sites that were suffering, because we've also seen this rise in COVID, which we've all have probably heard about. It's impacting our custodial team as well. So we are able to move our resources accordingly. And I think this year, we're going to be set up a lot better than we were last year. Last year, not only did we have COVID, but we also had a lot of vacancies in our ranks. We filled some of those vacancies, again, with the assistance of HR, so thank you guys very much. But now, we're really making some good progress.
Are we up to capacity with custodial help?
We still have some vacancies. I think we're typically going to see that turnover, especially in that particular area. We're going to see a lot of promotions, so some people have promoted into other areas. So I think we're constantly going to see some churn, what we have a vacancy rate of about 10%. So that's going to be standard. But with our new process, we're able to improve where we were last year.
Dr. Funches, I want to commend you for all your work. You have the biggest, one of the biggest lifts, your whole team, HR team. And I'm really happy to see that we're going to hire vice principals and have succession plans for principals. That's so needed across the Board. I'm on a national committee, and that's what they're talking about, succession plans for leadership. And anyway, that's on the ALIS, I was put on the ALIS Policy and Advocacy Committee, and that's one of their top priorities, is leadership succession plans. So that's great. And then, just getting back to foreign language teachers for middle schools and high schools, I hope that included in that is also our sign interpreters, so that our students also have the option to take sign language. I don't know if you have that in your plan or not, but if it isn't, I'm putting that in your-
Take a look at it. We'll work with the team.
Yeah, in your mind, because that's a language as well, sign.
Understood.
And then, to Michelle Cleveland, thank you so much. I don't know if she's still on, they're probably not on. But anyway, I just want to thank her. She's really on point. The only concern I have is that I hope we go beyond reducing chronic absenteeism beyond 5%. I know 5% is the goal, but I hope it would be like 20 or 25, so that we can, you know, reach our students and our families and so forth. But I just want to thank you all for such a great presentation. And also, Ginger, that was a great presentation. It just uplifted me. I love kids, and it just, you know, spoke to my heart, so, thank you. Thank you.
If I could, Dr. Flores, yes, the foreign language and the signing is in there as well. Yes.
Yes, I also too, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, thank you, Dr. Flores, Ms. Rosales Medina.
There, he beat you to it. So I just wanted to say, I loved the video. Are we going to be sharing that on social media? Oh, wonderful, because I want to share it, definitely want to share it. And this is a great way for parents, it's like, stay on board, a bog is a fist, even encourage the children themselves, you know what, we're excited when we see students. So congratulations on the video, it was a great video. I want to go back, I want to go to goal number three, and that would be for the Wellness Centers. And I think, I know there's, of course, going to be talk with budget and so forth, but I do want to, my personal push would be more into creating a space. I know that it's nowhere noted, other than just verbally that it was noted, but I do want to create a space at each of the high schools. So I know that's going to be part of the conversation when we talk about the budget, but that is definitely a push that I will be moving forward towards. The key metrics, I love this, this is a great way to visually see. This also holds us accountable, this is what we want to do, this is the areas that we want to meet. And they're realistic as well. And I'm sure that none of them are fixed, so they can always make adjustments accordingly. But I do appreciate the district doing this for us, so that way we can stay on track and set our priorities and goals, and making sure our students are doing well. I'm really excited, I'm really proud of our Cabinet, every single one, and those that are part of the team as well that are not here, thank you so much for doing this. This was a great PowerPoint presentation that aligns everything that we really want to push for. I think everything that I was thinking of making sure that we support is in here, so, which is great. So thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina, Dr. Dadi Rogers.
Thank you. And thank you all for the presentation. I definitely want to start out with that. And I want to just ask, and some of this has kind of been touched on, but I do agree the calendar, sooner the better, where we can kind of have a guideline, what's coming up? And it's, and if you would keep them in the categories of the five that you have, so we know what you're presenting to us in those particular goals. It would be helpful to have that. And then, going to the questions that I had, that I said earlier I would ask, is in the Wellness Centers, I think it's important for us also to know, we've never talked about how much it costs, and I think, Harold, you had indicated that you would, when we have that budget meeting, maybe we can add it there, I don't know. But just curious, what does a Wellness Center that's like at Sierra cost, right? Because we did all get the memo, and then we got a presentation tonight that talked about this big amount of money that we have. But I think we also need to zero it down into two conversations. I've heard Wellness Centers, which makes some of us think about what's happening in Pacific, right? What does that cost? And then I've heard it's important for the community to know that we have put in Wellness Teams way back when, and they've improved, even when we came back with our supports through DBH and through the county. So I think there's some messaging issues in there, because each time we hear the presentation, it sounds as though we haven't started, or we don't have anything going. So if we can further define the Wellness Center Sierra look, and then the Wellness Center Pacific, and then begin to look at those costs, and of course, I'm sure, Mr. Stallings, you'll let us know what we can use money on or not, so that we can be clear in our messaging, because we definitely want to have it. But just because we have money, what does that mean? Does it mean we can reallocate? And then further, what have we already allocated that money on? Or will we need to shift some things around? Also, I think it's important for us to be able to say, how long does it take to create a Wellness Center or Wellness Building? What is, you know, what are the timelines on that? So we can be realistic to our community. And then also, the designing of the rooms, do we have that space? And when I started thinking back to centers and the space and a room, I also want to know, do we still have those parent centers? Because at one point in time, we wanted to make sure that parent centers were at our schools. So is this going to be a collaboration? But I wouldn't recommend it to be a collaboration, simply because there's two different needs going on. And we really have to be protective about the Wellness Space versus combining it with all people are coming in for different things. But ultimately, and lastly, is that what, I want to even hear more about what we're going to do with our Welcome Center. You know, is there going to be a centralized Wellness Center to have all of those things there, and the event is just more convenient to go there? So I don't want to lose the continuity of those particular things that we have talked about over the past, when we're bringing this Wellness together. But I would ask the district to please somewhere or somehow, we need to promote what we have, right? So then we can be able to say, either we have it or we don't have it, and then they can go and check. And then they'll be coming to us saying, well, I went to this school, and they didn't have it, and then we know we need to fix that. But again, great presentation, great streamline, and whether we call it the key metrics indicators, you know, as opposed to the KPIs before, at least when they come to us, we know, you're going to talk to us about, you know, supports, you're going to talk to us about the health, you're going to talk to us about family engagement, and then we can direct those that call us to let them know at that particular Board meeting, we will be addressing those out of our five categories. But thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Dadi Rogers. And no close comments on this, just, you know, my colleagues have said it repeatedly, but thank you to, you know, Executive Cabinet and our team for putting this presentation together, as well as the goals, you know. And I think we also acknowledge that you're shorthanded, too. So we know that the work is a lot, and we have great demands as a Board. But, you know, one of the things that I was concerned about going into the next year, and I know we are as well as a team, is just, you know, focus of clarity, right? Because there's sometimes a fear of uncertainty with change. And, you know, we wanted to reassure our community, reassure our staff, our team here, our Board as well, that we have clarity of focus on our goals going into next year. You know, we have coherence as a Board and Executive Cabinet, that the goals are clearly articulated as well. And I think we've done that, so, you know, I'm really excited about that. As well as the monitoring piece, I think that was a great recommendation, Ms. Sabios. And I'm sure that they were thinking about that, but now we all know it, that we want a monitoring piece in place, and that we can monitor our progress towards our goals, just like we would our students, right? That's a pretty simple thing to ask for, but a huge task and ask as well. Because when we look at these goals, they are quite stupendous. But that is our expectation as well, as a Board, for our students and our community, you know. And I hope our students are still watching, you know, because we, and Dr. Rogers, you made a lot of great questions, inquiry about our Wellness Centers, and what it takes to put one together, and how much, and how, you know, how long. They don't happen overnight. I know we have two already in our plans to develop, and we're excited about that. So we'll ask for patience with that as well. But we do have programs in place already at our schools, and we need to make sure we get that out there to our community, out there to our students, that we already have these Wellness Areas, at least in our schools, at all our schools. So there's an understanding about the services that are available for everybody. But I'm really excited about going into next year. I always get a little bit anxious at this time of year, just being an educator as well, definitely as a Board member, because, you know, we just, we don't know the unknown going into next year. And the new norm for us is definitely different. So thank you for putting this together. I know as a Board, we've had concerns about, what are we doing next year? And at least I think we have a little bit of a, a little more clarity to what we're doing. Dr. Dadi Rogers?
Just real quick, I forgot, and a baseline would be helpful, right? Because we've seen that we want to increase or decrease these numbers, but it's important for us to have a baseline, to know where we're working with, right? Thank you.
Absolutely. Great point. And again, just a great job of working with and listening to the Board, and the intersection piece, I really liked that. That was fantastic, on, you know, showing that cohesiveness and collaboration between Cabinet and the Board as well. So I'm really pleased with the presentation, and I'll quit talking, so we can move on. Thank you. Dr. Rogers? Oh, did I turn your light off? Because no light on. Okay, good, let's stop. I'm sorry, I cut off Mr. Sol, and he said, can I have like a two seconds? So, Mr. Sol.
So a lot of good dialogue. I would just say, on behalf of our executive leadership, we appreciate the Board's leadership and guidance, and high expectations and accountability for us. We share that same sentiment, that we did not want this, despite the transitions we're obviously going through, to be just a year that we sort of moved through. We want to make sure that it's a year with purpose, that we're accomplishing things, because we know that our students can't wait. So we definitely appreciate the Board's leadership and guidance as we move through this process. So thank you to the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Sol, and let's continue to move on to 7.0, Board Discussion Superintendent Search, and then 7.1, Perspective Search Firms. And you should have a handout with you as well. I don't see it in the electronic piece, but we have a hard copy. Okay, I was looking for it in here. You know, Board, I know you had tasked me with a couple jobs I needed to do since our last Board meeting, and that was one, put together a list of potential search firms, as well as establish a timeline, while actually working with Mr. Sol and Executive Cabinet. We did, and this list came from a number of different sources. This guy wasn't coming well. Came from some folks up here on the Board, folks from Executive Cabinet, other folks I know in education, all over the county. And I tried to get a comprehensive list for us, an objective list that we could look at, included links as well. So you could go in there and take a look at each firm yourself, and not take the word of any one of us, right? Do your homework, please, go look at them. So our next step would be to either identify a firm, or a suggestion is maybe more than one firm, and have them come present to us, maybe their company and their methodology of how they go about selecting a potential pool of candidates for us to look at. So, and then I was also informing the timeline piece that we were talking about, that, you know, it's critical that we identify a firm, and then we would work with them on establishing a timeline as well, because they have a lot more expertise in process than we do. But I wanted it to be a fair and objective process on selecting a firm, and then- Uh, but I wanted it to be a fair and objective process on selecting a firm and then moving forward. So, Dr. Flores, I see your light, and we'll entertain conversation.
To clarify, um, Dr. Wyatt, you're recommending that we, um, pick top three and then invite them to come in? Or is that what you're recommending?
It's just simply a, a starting point of discussion. It's just, it's not my suggestion, but an idea. So, I would like us as a board to determine our process moving forward. If we can come down to one right now, fine. That's great. But, uh, you know, we may need to do a little more homework, or you may be very familiar with some of these folks already. I'm familiar with most of them, just so you know. Um, but I'm not going to give my opinion, because I think we all need to make our own determination who we think's best in this process. This is not a pleasant process. We went through this not too long ago, and I mean, it's, and so, as we know, it's a big task, so, and a very important one.
I'm familiar with, um, ESS Consulting Group, and they have High Marks, uh, McPherson and Jacobson as well have High Marks. Um, I think Leadership Associates worked with us, Mr. Tillman, you remember? Um, and, uh, so I don't know if we, if we do go with the top three, uh, to interview, those are the three that I would, uh, choose.
All right, Dr. Flores, I'm having everything in my folder drop right in front of me. Thank you for your recommendations, Mr. Tillman.
I, I highly recommend we bring the top three in, and let them present, and then have the board make a decision. Because once we bring those three in, you'll start asking around about it, and you'll, it'll become clear who you want and who you don't want. And then the board can vote on it. So, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Dr. Dadi Rogers.
Again, for clarity, do you want to recommend, you want us to recommend you three right now, or how do you want us to do this?
Well, again, this is a board and a board decision. You know, I, I just want to guide the conversation and make a determination, hopefully on next steps.
Okay, so, I'll, I'll say this, just based on just kind of some of the conversations that we have, any, anything kind of associated with, that we may have, no, or that some small portion of bias, I would, I would eliminate. You know what I mean? There's names on here, do I know them personally? No, but there's names on here that maybe have been associated with, oh, they did it before, or just something. So, my thought process would be anything that is not as familiar from our past. So, my, my, McPherson was one, and I know Dr. Flores says she, she knows, but I don't know the depth, the reputation, and you did have a number.
I don't, I don't know any of the people, I just know their reputation.
But you did it based on when we Googled and looked and said their, okay.
I did it based on their reputation.
So, I wa, I was saying McPherson, because I, you know, I did it, other than what was just said. And then, secondly, is then COSCA, and then Hazard Young, which wasn't a lot of information on that one. So, McPherson, COSCA Group, and Hazard Young, and Atia, I think it is, to look into those?
Does anybody have an extra list for Mr. Vice President Tillman? He was just looking. There we go. Thank you. And I'm sorry, Dr. Dadi Rogers, he was asking me for a list, and...
So, that, I just said McPherson, COSCA, and Hazard Young, is, you know, anything in there is what I'm saying.
All right, that's Gwen. Dr. Flores, I think you gave us a couple, right? I'm sorry, let me write yours down.
Uh, yes, I said, uh, ESS Consulting Group, McPherson and Jacobson, and Leadership Associates.
Thank you very much. All right. Mr. Tillman, you spoke as well, did you have any you recommended?
Uh, I'll just try to, hopefully we get the three tonight, though.
All right, thank you. Um, Ms. Rosales Medina, Ms. Sabios, I haven't heard from either of you.
I, I don't have three, but I do have one, um, the ESS Consulting Group.
All righty, so we have, uh, one with, two with two so far. All right, Ms. Sabios, I know, you know, this may be new to you, but if you want some time?
It, it is new to me, and I personally have not, um, researched any of these. Um, I think, I think that I would like to, um, do that, but I, I would agree, um, you know, that, that is somebody completely new, and that has not maybe worked with us before in the past. Just to get away from any clout, you know? Um, yeah.
I think that is very important as well, so our community knows we're being as objective as possible. Um, what I could recommend, because we got some great recommendations already, is like when we did our top 10 before, we made recommendations, and we did a little bit of thinking about it, a little bit of homework. We gave ourselves a deadline, and that deadline could be a strict deadline, we could say by Friday, um, and then move forward. And if we can identify maybe a couple right now, that's also good, as maybe a top three, possibly, and then, you know, wait for your response as well, because I want to make sure that you have the time. That's why I gave the links, um, so you could go on there and take a look at them as well. It's quite a bit of reading, and you can learn a little bit about what they do, and then we could have a presentation, um, by the next board meeting, hopefully. We'll have to coordinate that with them, and then go from there. All right?
Doc, uh, Dr. Wyatt, could I, just, I guess, just for my knowledge, could I, um, know from this list, maybe who, um, the district has employed in the past?
Haven't we used in the past?
Who have?
Um, you know, and I'll be honest, I haven't done anything with us here, but I have worked with some of these folks, and so I want to make sure I go last, I don't want any, you know, influential bias at all, so...
You want us to send in the link, send in who we want to Karen by Friday?
We can, but I think some of you already identified yours. And, um, but if you want, we could just say this, if you have a change of heart, or you say, oh, gosh, there's a third one I'd like to, um, we could say by Friday. I think that's being a, a very fair process. Um, and, and a lot of people already give an opinion right now, which I think is great feedback.
I already gave mine, okay.
Yeah.
I think if we did it like we did the top 10, where we number on one through six, one being the best.
Well, I think we're even, I think we could cut it down even more right now, or, well, no, you're right, because Ms., yeah, Ms. Sabios needs to look, so, okay.
You get them turned in? But I will say this, none of these organizations are perfect. None of these organizations are perfect. And there's always concerns about the organization, because some people tell you that certain ones omit certain candidates, and other ones have stables that they only give you, and so, it's not a perfect world. So, to think that, you know, and you might not want to say you're going to eliminate ones that you worked with before, because you might find out those are the best ones. So, you still want to use them. It's just, and they change over time. They're not the same people, because you're dealing with people, so...
In the end, we will pick the final pool.
Right, so I would just suggest that between now and whenever you want to do it...
I would say Friday, let's, let's work on this and be aggressive about it.
Let's just send out the list we did last time, we number on one through six, one being the highest ranking, so the one with the lowest number is the one that...
Would be our, our top, well, our top three, if we're going to go that. And then, what do you think for presentation? Thirty minutes?
Yeah.
Keep it brief, um, so we're not here all night?
Yes.
That might be a, a special board meeting.
Yes, no doubt.
And then, um, we can make our determination that evening, actually. And then, uh, we can notify them, and then start on timeline.
I agree.
Sure.
Um, you know, who said what on what?
I'm sorry, I'll wait.
Can, can we just kind of go over, and I missed who, um...
Sure.
Uh, you know, as I'm taking notes as well.
Okay, so number one, which was, um, McPherson and Jacobson, we had, uh, Dr. Dadi Rogers and Dr. Flores. And Dr. Flores, did you say Leadership Associates?
Yeah.
Okay, so number two, uh, Dr. Flores was, uh, yay on Leadership Associates. Number three, which is ESS Consulting, we had Dr. Flores and, uh, Ms. Rosales Medina. Number four, County Schools, we had zero. Number five, COSCA, COSCA Group, we had, um, Dr. Dadi Rogers, and then Hazard Young and Atia, and we had Dr. Dadi Rogers. For myself, I would look at, at the top three, just so you know, literally the top three, which would be, uh, McPherson, Leadership, and ESS for myself. So, I wanted to go last and wait, but I will, to be honest with you, I will still go and take a look at, uh, COSCA and Hazard as well, in a little bit more depth, just to make sure I give them an objective look over.
Which ones, where they choose, which ones, I'm sorry, which one did you pick?
I put, I picked the top three. One, two, three. But again, um, like I said, I'll look at the other ones as well. But I, I am, um, familiar with two and three a little bit, not a lot. Um, I won't say that there's one in the top three I do have a bias with, but I still know they're a good firm, but, um, just my own experiences, so... So, really, it's probably two in that top three that I would say, based on the criteria my colleagues have given me tonight, so, yeah. But, uh, McPherson and Jacobson, CSBA, obviously that's, uh, through, uh, service through CSBA, which I think is pretty amazing. Um, and we've looked at them for other services as well, so... So, do we have a plan and a process by Friday?
Can we send it to Karen?
Yes, ma'am. All righty, Karen, you get that?
Okay, so, everybody's going to send me that, or I'm just basing it off of this, plus if anybody changes their mind? Or are there, everybody's going to send me something?
We'll make sure to send.
So, we're going to all send it to you, again, yeah.
Okay, and then once I get that, you want me to bring it back to another board meeting to show the ranking?
Uh, we probably could send it out in a Friday update, you know, or, yeah, the sooner the better.
Okay, so once we do that, then you want us to work on scheduling them in?
Yes, as soon as possible, which would be the next board meeting, right? If that's possible, I know that's kind of a short window, or sooner. All right, sure.
So, a question, just for clarity, um, for, for Karen as well. So, we're going to submit in our stuff on Friday, um, to her, or sooner, and then she's going to send it to all of us again? And then maybe we should have another deadline to send it in as ranking, or are we going to have it? Because we're only going to give her, um, our individual choices. Is she going to just see which one comes first on her own? Okay, got it.
Same thing as top 10.
I'm going to actually give it today, so that way you can have it.
I'll give mine today as well. And mine, our top three. Ms. Cunningham, just so you know, one, two, three for me.
In order for it to work, you have to do one through six.
Oh, you have to do all six, I'm sorry.
If you don't do one through six...
No, Mr. Tillman's right. I apologize, he is right. You have to, you have to give it to them.
Do you want me to send out a form with all of them ranked, and then you guys just return that, or like we did before?
That's a good idea. Yeah.
Okay, I'll send it out tomorrow.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion, folks?
Just make sure you do one through six. If you don't do one through six, then the numbers don't add up.
But we don't want to try for consistency on this one. This is not like all of these are in, what if you just, or no?
Pardon me?
You don't want to put a zero either. We're ranking, if you're ranking and you want to know, now you're ranking it in, as opposed to just, it may come up randomly, is my concern on this.
But we got to rank them.
That's, that's saying include them all, though.
So, could we add a ranking?
But what if you don't want to include them all?
Could we add a ranking of zero, meaning?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I'm proposing that, because I'm just saying.
It only works if we go one through six.
We have to rank every single one, like, what's our first choice?
If you do one through six, it becomes real easy.
I agree.
If you don't do, if you don't do one through six, the, the numbers don't add up.
It could cause some issues, it could. I mean, we've tried that process before, and it's worked for us, so I think we probably, it's something we know, so I would recommend we stay with that.
So, we just like those things, those were all educational things, and this, I'm just saying.
Well, if they're at the bottom, you give them a five and a six, or four, five, six.
In this case, yeah, in this case, but a five or a six really could do nothing, you know, because if it's at the top, then it's still at the top, so...
So, I, I think, and, you know, again, the board can decide whatever it decides, but I hear Dr. Doughty, right? If we give each item, like, say, one, rate every item one to three, right? Let's say. Or that way, the, you can, or, zero to three, or whatever the number we come up with, but you give any one organization the ability to get zero, where you're not forcing...
The way we, we do in it, if you give a zero, say we give number six, five zeros, and then somebody gives it a one, it's a one, and that's the lowest score, and that would be, oh, wow, that's the lowest score, because our, our rubric, the lowest potential score would be a six. If somebody got all ones across the board, you know, the lowest potential score would be a six, and the highest potential score would be a 36. So, if you throw a zero in there, then that really could skew your numbers, if that makes sense.
Happens to our students.
Right?
That's my point, that's my point.
Come on, that's D's and F's, we know that, we got to change that, I agree with you.
No, I'm saying, but that's the point.
Yeah. Well, in this case, some people are just going to get cut out, how's that? But, um, well, we, come on, we need consensus on the scoring process, you know?
Just to clarify, we're going to, the first, our first choice is number one, our second, our third, our fourth, our fifth, and our sixth. Okay.
I could do mine right now, but, um, let's give it a process, we'll see by Friday afternoon, um, and if there's some still confusion after that, we can, you know, have some discussion about it, but I think the process will work.
Oh, fast.
Excuse me?
Oh, you're fast?
Okay. Well, Ms. Rosales Medina is taking a quick break?
She's doing her numbers.
Oh, she's doing her numbers? My gosh, that's what she meant by fast, okay. I thought you were going to take a quick, fast break, which she is, so...
Yes.
All righty, folks, are we okay with that moving forward?
Let me just clarify one more time. One is their favorite, six is their least.
Yep. And I'll have you mine by tonight, I'm pretty solid on mine as well. It's just the four, five, six. All righty, folks, thank you very much for that discussion and your input, which was very valuable, moving forward with this, very important process and decision we're going to need to make. Mandated policy revisions, and all I could say is to the Policy Committee, wow, you guys have been very busy, it looks like, on a lot of policy revisions. I know on 8.1, and I'm not sure if staff's going to take over the conversation on this one, I think so, but I know 8.1, our mandated policy requirements, that we have to, um, by law, uh, update, so I'm not sure who will lead that one. Is that you, Dr. Funches?
From my understanding, Dr. Wyatt, uh, Vice President Tillman and Board, um, when we took on these changes for our board policies, we understand that they are statutory changes, and they are required, and so, they're all CDE reviewed, CDE approved, and it's language that come from the California Department of Education, and also CSBA, in conjunction with CSBA. And so, the process, from my understanding, for these mandated policy revisions, they don't necessarily have to go through the normal process, but they do have to come here so that we can get them, uh, updated. And then I'll further add to that, these, uh, we had a federal program monitoring audit, or FPM, as we like to call it, and there were a few findings, and the findings all had to do with ed equity and UCP. So, the three policies, or the four policies that you see before you, all the language is mandatory, all the language is mandated, all the language was written by the California Department of Education, and so it's not our language, it's simply updating the language so that we can meet the requirements of the audit and be able to move forward.
All righty, Dr. Funches, and thank you for the clarification on that as well. So, these, as we understand, are mandated policy revisions, so really, it's just going through and reviewing them and approving them as a board. Is that correct?
Correct. Correct, I'm not sure if you have to go line by line, it's all, uh, CDE-approved.
Dr. Flores, you had a quick question?
From the Policy Board, the Board should know that we reviewed all of these already, just FYI, and we've done it with different Cabinet members, and we've gone line by line, in depth, and, um, so, the first one, 1312.3, is, I believe, um, our second, is that right? Karen, is that our second reading? Yes, so...
No, these are all going to be approved on a first reading, because they're mandated.
These are all gonna be approved on the first reading.
Yeah, we want them all now, they actually have a deadline too, for these.
Okay, okay. Right, so, we've gone through all of these, and we've taken some of your input, especially Mr. Tillman about parent attendance, that they don't have to...
I read it, it sounds great, that's why I said, we ought to take them, let's go through them.
Right, and I do have one question, on the first one, 1312.3, it's on page 2, um, it says migrant education, and then nutritional services is crossed out.
Dr. Flores, I think on these, we'd have to take a motion, and second, and discuss them on them.
Oh, then we can talk about, okay, sorry.
Okay, and then we can move forward. So, we'll go ahead and go to, and thank you, Dr. Funches, once again, for the explanation on those. We'll move on to 8.2, and that will be resolved, the Board of Education adopts Board Policy 1312.3, Uniform Complaint Process as Revised.
A move.
It's been moved and properly seconded, discussion, Dr. Flores?
So, I don't remember, was this, um, Dr., was that you, Dr. Funches?
It was, and Mr. Medina, and Luis Chavez.
Right, on page 2, right after migrant education.
Correct.
Nutritional services is crossed out, and I know parents complain about the food, so, does that mean they can't complain about the food?
Well, it does not, from my understanding, and please chime in, Mr. Solins, what the California Department of Education wanted to do was make sure that the language is more broader, to encompass, uh, other complaints that may be brought forth by our parents, so, nutrition services being taken out, being replaced by regional occupational centers and programs, and, and everything else that was added, they can complain, anything that has to do with federal program monitoring, or any funds received by the district federally, falls under UCP.
And, and I would just add, the child nutrition program, it is under its own sort of set of rules, so there is a separate complaint procedure for that program. So, this is Uniform Complaint Procedures related to categorical programs, and the programs listed here, child nutrition programs have their own complaint process.
I see down below that it says free and reduced price meals, but not the food, okay. Alright, so, this is just our, our programs, okay, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Dr. Flores, and thank you for the clarification, staff, any other discussion on this one? If not, let's go ahead and vote on 8.2. Okay, motion carries, we'll move on to 8.3, be resolved, the Board of Education adopts Board Policy 4119.11, sexual harassment as revised.
So moved, second, okay, sorry.
Oh, you guys are both tied on that one, so it'll go ladies first, Dr. Flores with his motion, and seconded by Vice President Tillman, any discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Alright, motion carries, we'll move on to 8.4, be resolved, the Board of Educat-, okay, be resolved, the Board of Education adopts Board Policy 5145.3, nondiscrimination slash harassment as revised.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? Alright, let's vote, thank you, Ms. Rosas Medina. Alright, motion carries, move on to 8.5, be resolved, the Board of Education adopts Board Policy 5145.7, Title IX, Sexual Harassment as Revised.
Moved, sec.
Once again, we'll go with ladies first, motion by Ms. Rosas Medina, seconded by Vice President Tillman, any discussion? Alright, let's go ahead and vote. Alright, motion carries, let's move on to 9.0, reports and comments, 9.1, Board Members, and let me see what our order is, and I will please ask if we could keep our comments to 5 minutes or less, I know it's a very exciting time of the year, with lots to share, let's do our best. Alright, we will start off with Ms. Rosas Medina, and then work our way left from there.
I just wanted to say, welcome to all our students, August 1st, and hope you enjoy your first day, and of course, to all the families that will be traveling and starting a new routine with their children, so, and that's basically it today.
Outstanding job, Ms. Rosas Medina, left some time to spare for the rest of us. Alright, that doesn't mean 9 minutes, Dr. Flores, so, Dr. Flores, just kidding.
I'll talk fast. Welcome back, teachers, staff, before August 1st, to get ready, and I hope you all rested, and I hope you're safe, and I just wanna caution us not to have big group, um, sessions, because COVID variant is going strong, and if we can have virtual sessions of, if, if possible, or shift or pivot to it. I just wanna say really quickly, I went to KELSA, I was so proud, Arroyo presented, Michelle Cleveland presented, Tamika, Casey presented, oh man, they did such an outstanding job, it was, we were, we were present, and Dr. Rodriguez, Tex Acosa, Beatriz, and I think Myra Sabios was there too, it was spectacular. I, I wanna ask, Mr. Solins, don't answer now, but, how has the LCAP many been used to mitigate dual-language combos? I'd like to know that, you can tell me in the Friday report. I would like to make a gentle recommendation, that we categorize all our consent items by division, so that we can say, it's business, it's, you know, it's, um, student services, et cetera. I also like to recommend ICUC students be included in the Wellness District Committee when we come back, and also, I wanna read Langston Hughes' poem, "I Too." "I too sing America, I am the darker brother, they send me to eat in the kitchen when company comes, but I laugh and eat well, and grow strong, tomorrow I'll be at the table, when company comes, nobody dares say to me, eat in the kitchen. Then besides, they'll see how beautiful I am, and be ashamed, I too am in America, am America," Langston Hughes, first published in 1926. And the reason I read this is because we got the educator, and "I too sing America" is where it's here, and, uh, it's been nearly 100 years after the poem was written, its message still rings true for many marginalized groups, from African-Americans to indigenous people, to families who came to this country generations ago, to newcomers of today, newcomers of today. But those who have lived in the shadows of society are slowly coming out of the kitchen to declare that they too sing America. Among them are 15,000 educators with deferred action for childhood arrivals, DACA, our teachers, there's 15,000 teachers that are DACA, and they're, uh, and federal policy now protects them as immigrants who were brought to this country as children, and so, I, it was in the educator, and I just wanted to share it, and they share 2 undocumented student DACA, DACA students, um, a Tagalog-speaking student, "I was responsible for my family's legacy," it's what we call in Tagalog, and "Utang na lob, a debt of the soul," and then, uh, his name is Jericho KG Keller Grasidiano, and then, uh, Viridiana Castro Silva is the other student who is an educator. So, I don't know how many DACA students we have, Dr. Funches, as teachers in our district, but, I salute them, and we salute them all, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, and thank you for that inspirational reading. Vice President Tillman.
Yes, I just, um, in preparation for this upcoming school year, I know, at my job, there are a lot of people who are testing positive for COVID-19, so, I'm hoping that we have the, I had asked a while back, that we change the policy to allow parents that come to the school and want their kids to be tested by the company, where they don't have to opt into the, um, mandatory testing, whatever it was called, so, I'm hoping that we're able to change the permission slip to add a line that says, "You can test my child, and, and get tested by that company." And I, and I, I hope that we are providing enough money, I know there was some concern about the company, but it's what we have right now, and it's extra, an extra resource, and I'm telling you, with the number of people that are testing positive at my job, I know there's gonna be a large number of people testing positive, and the more resources we have, the better. So, I heard you guys say that you cut back on the contract, I don't know why you cut back on the contract, 'cause we're paying for it with, um, extra money, and extra money is for COVID mitigation, so, I'm just encouraging you to be prepared, i- it's obvious that, when school starts, a lot of folks are gonna test positive, and the parents, I'm sure, are gonna appreciate us testing people and doing the notification that that company does, so, I, I hope that, you know, if we, if, if the funding was based on the number of, um, positive tests at the end of the school year, that's gonna be different now. It's obvious that, one, the upswing, so I just wanna make sure that we have the proper resources there to help manage that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman, Ms. Sabios?
To, Board President, um, just really quickly, as well, you know, I hope that everybody had a great summer, and, you know, welcome back to, to school, August 1st, as our kiddos have already told us. I did want to ask about the, um, I guess, the guidelines that the district is currently operating under in terms of, um, you know, COVID, because I think last board meeting that we had, the contract that Mr. Tillman was referring to, um, I don't know if we, I can't remember if we agreed that, uh, somebody would come before us and kinda give us an update on, you know, current cases and things like that, um, I, oops, sorry, I think that, um, this is something that's here to stay with us, I don't think it's going anywhere, um, so, I'm no doctor, I don't know, I think that we, we will have to learn to kind of live with it. I would be interested in seeing some of the statistics on, like, death rates, um, you know, because that was a, a big concern when it first happened, that a lot of people were getting sick and actually dying, um, but if, uh, people are getting sick now, and it's just kind of like, you know, morphing into, like, the common cold, or something like that, then, you know, then that, that's different, and it needs to be approached a little different as well. So, I, I guess I would just like to see, um, what the, you know, the statistics are on that, um, because, I say that to say, um, it's really, really important that, um, we, we don't default back on COVID to, um, for it to be a, a barrier for parent involvement and parent engagement at schools. So, I know that, I don't know what our current policy is, but I know that parents are eager to come back to school, um, and volunteer in the classrooms as they used to, um, and things like that, and so, I just wanna make sure that we, we have clear guidance as a board, um, I don't think that there's anything currently in place, so, if we don't have anything, I may, I may be wrong, I don't know, that's why I'm asking, if we don't have anything currently in place, then, schools should be allowing parents, um, if they're not already allowing them, to be able to come in and pick back up on that process. Also, um, meetings, like, parent meetings and things like that, I know that some have, uh, taken a liking to virtual meetings, and that's great, um, I think that for those that wanna continue to do that, more power to them, but there are also other groups that still struggle with technology, and don't want to do virtual, and I wanna make sure, and I wanna make it very clear, that if they want to have in-person meeting, that they are offered and extend that opportunity, um, and that we're not utilizing, you know, the pandemic, if, as a deterrent to be able to do that, so, just, I guess, some clarity on that would be nice, um, other than that, oh, lastly, um, where did we leave off with the student, uh, Board Members? I know that we brought it up, but I, I don't think I heard back.
I'll talk a little bit about that in my board comments.
Okay, perfect, perfect, okay, that's it, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios, Dr. Dottie Rogers?
Thank you, um, and I first wanna start and applaud the ESSA Department for garnering $30,000 in scholarship for our students, so we appreciate that effort, and also, as Ms. Cooper had spoke earlier on the public comments, I did get a chance to, to come to the WORC Academy event that they had, and I think that was very important, those students had been in that cohort for quite some time, and they were actually the final culminating cohort, so they were so grateful, you know, to be encouraged right here in our boardroom, so I was able to make it over on a lunch. I also want to, um, just, I, I brought this up probably each year, um, December, Indian County has a Regional Wellness Conference, and it is an excellent conference, um, for everyone to attend, I know Mrs. Sabios was down there, and Dr. Wyatt was also down there, and just to give you an idea, and then I wanna commend also, we had a team, I'm, I'm starting to see more and more of our staff down there, and, um, kudos to Principal Maynard, who I was able to sit in her presentation, but, just to give you an idea of, of some of the topics, it's engaging families in social and emotional learning, a journey connecting with women history, and, um, acts of love, and holistic wraparound models, and services, and interventions, it, the list goes on and on, and you pick a strand, and so, you know, I would encourage the district, as we present wellness, to make sure we are defining our own wellness, and sending teams there, it is, it's a learning environment, yet, it's an environment that also reminds you the importance of your own self-care, um, and, and how to regulate yourself, and then, you know, strategies, so I think, and know those that attended, I got a chance to talk to some of them, out of the presentation, we go annually anyway, but, um, it is open up to educators, and I was, as we were in there, Rialto just dominated the room, and, you know, while we, we had a presence, but they just have, they brought so many people there, as well as some of the other surrounding districts, so I would like to see us get that information in advance. Also, um, in reference to, to wellness, I think, uh, some of us did get an email, and, and I did send it over to Dr. Rodriguez about the Comfort Dog, this is something that we see throughout the county, that's a great, um, tool for those students that are experiencing trauma to, to have, you know, I'm sure there's some type of protocol, but I hope we look into that as well, as well as what Mrs. Sabios said about, um, our student, uh, voice, you know, that is something we definitely want, I seen somewhat of some input on it, um, but I think, you know, it was the cart before the horse, or something like that, but, um, we are aware, and we want, you know, the, the district to know that that's, that is a priority, and always has been, but the reason why we had paused is COVID, you know, there was just so much that was going on, but it's a good thing we're getting our heads above water. And lastly, I don't know if all of you got the, um, information, that on the 16th of this month, we now have a mental health crisis number, just like 411, 211, it's 888, and so, you wanna make sure that, you know, family members, if everyone you know has that number, if they're in crisis, they call 888, that was some legislation that was pushed for quite some time, and I think it's great, so if you're experiencing a crisis, you can call 888.
I think it's 899.
Actually, 988.
988, there you go.
Wait, I just, no, no, no. Is it 988?
Yeah, it is.
Did I say 9? Okay, let me make sure.
I'm sure, it's 988.
Yeah, because they wanted to, to do it with, like, 9, similar to 911, so it's 988.
You got it, 988, so, 988, 988, um, that we are calling that, and making sure, because we do have individuals that, there's a crisis line through the county, but it's too long, no one ever remembers it, and so, 988, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dottie Rogers, and for the little laugh there, uh, some of us might need that crisis line, let me say that, I'll tell ya. So, I decided to make my comments brief as well, but, a lot of great things going on, looking forward to the new school year, uh, super excited about that, we know these last couple of years have been challenging, to say the least, taxing on all of us, and, um, but I see a renewed energy in, in most of our folks coming back, and, uh, we understand how to work in this new environment that we're in, and we've progressed quite a bit, so, had a great opportunity to meet with our Student Advisory Council, and, uh, boy, did I learn a lot from them, when we talk about student voice, right? So, I just wanna give some of their concerns. Safety tune from school with late start bill, what an advanced topic for our kids, transportation of students due to late start bill, always a top one, food. Out of the students there, there, there were 8, uh, 7 of them liked sports and hobbies that we offer through our programs, so, I thought that was really important for us to know how those extracurriculars mean a lot to our kids, and another purpose for them to come to school. We discussed our student school board member application recruitment process, uh, of 7 student school board members, uh, we also discussed about them rotating the meetings, so not all of them have to come at any one time, obviously, that's a lot, but also, to ensure that we don't take them away from their studies as well at night, but to give them a voice. Yeah, we studied, talked about process, and interview process, how we wanna have an equitable process, a very fair process, so that's something we're gonna have to flush out. Great job, again, there, executive cabinet leadership, uh, for meeting our, our new goal, goals and priorities for the year, outstanding job there, thank you for listening to us, and the board, as well as our community, and putting that together tonight, I think that was extremely important. I had an amazing opportunity to go to Washington DC, which was the ASC Summit, and that School Superintendent Association, and, I'll tell you what, our district is leading, I want you to know that, in a lot of categories, we could have presented probably about 70, 80... In a lot of categories, we could have presented probably about 70, 80% of those presentations that I went to. So I think that really does speak volumes about what we're doing here, especially when we talk about future focus and future readiness of education and innovation. Innovation is really the big topic when you look at a national level and where we're going as a district as well. Some areas that I was not aware of, and I wanted to share with us as a community and a team and a district, that stood out, I mean tremendously, was GPT-3, deep learning technologies, and that is artificial intelligence, AI. Now, we've always talked a lot about cybersecurity here, which I think is outstanding. And my son's studying that and specifically VR, which is virtual reality. We always bring around acronyms, right? But I really would ask our district and our our CTE folks to look at AI as it is a commanding, demanding field of the future. And little did I know so much about it. I will tell you this, it is scary. How you can interface with an AI on a computer and they know so much about you. You could have a conversation with an AI. Yeah, that will blow your mind away. Let me just tell you that. That's yeah, very scary. Some of the leadership skills that we want to look at when we talk about our framework of excellence and future framework for 2025, specific skill sets, self-leadership, basic cognitive skills and interpersonal skills. Future-focused success, three components, culture, social, emotional, social, emotional, cognitive, and then our growth model, our resources. So those are three areas. And again, we're right on the money with this. So my time is going fast. And then they talked about, and I read this book actually recently, really good book, Disrupting the Undisruptable. So basically not accepting the norm as normal, that we have to now start looking outside the box and disrupt our conversations and what we do to be innovative. Well, in this conference, Dr. Rogers already talked about it, and our tremendous representation of staff and presentations, great job to them. But I really want to end on a solid note on this. Our inaugural San Antonio Studentified School District Special Education Conference that is happening right now is Cal State San Bernardino, four-day conference. Outstanding job coordinating it, very professional presentation. And let me tell you, the workshops that I attended today were outstanding for myself as a special education administrator. I learned a lot today. So I just really want to compliment our team for what they're doing, for, again, being out in front of things and being a first in our area, which I was talking to Dr. Lundin, many folks there, think will be maybe a premier conference in special education in our region. And I can assure you, it will probably happen on a whole level we didn't even imagine. And I got 12 seconds. Our Ermes folks I met with, you'll love this, not only they're clinicians, they're school psychologists. Wow. Thank you. I was the last one, so sorry about that. Moving on. Comments to our AIC 9.2, Mr. In Charge, Mr. Solon?
All right, thank you, Dr. Wyatt. So a lot of work going on as we prepare to open schools. So I'll try to be fast, but I want to give credit to everyone who's been working so hard. So we have our Back to School Extravaganza, Second Annual Back to School Extravaganza this Thursday in Court Street Square from 9:00 to 3:00 PM. 1,500 families will enjoy a festive event where they can learn about the services that will help their children succeed in school. Many departments from SBC USD will be on hand to provide information about the support and opportunities that we provide, as well as community partners with free school supplies, dental supplies, and information on how to access family resources. Event is free. Families should be registered to ensure we can serve them all. And just a thank you to Dr. Rodriguez, Dr. Gonzalez, and the entire family engagement team for their leadership on this. Next, on the same day, occurring on the same day, we have the Superintendent's Summer Graduation, Thursday, July 21st, at 6:00 PM at the Way World Outreach. Again, this is a much anticipated event for 180 of our seniors from the class of 2022. Need a little extra time to get through it, but they're, they're, they've made it, and so they've earned all the credits necessary to accomplish and achieve their high school diploma. So we want to be on hand to celebrate there. And I know a number of us will be there to to support and give them a a welcome hand as they exit the stage with their diploma. So a special, special thanks to Dr., I'm going to mispronounce her name, Venkatesan for putting this together. It is an amazing event, and so I had the pleasure of participating last year and looking forward to this virtually as well. As well as Employee Night at the Sixer Sixer Sixty-Sixer Stadium. Employees will come together next Thursday, July 28th, at the Sixty-Sixer Stadium or San Manuel Stadium to celebrate the readiness for start of school. This is our opening year where thousands of our employees and their families will be on hand to make sure that we're ready for the first day of school, to have some fun, entertainment. And again, a thank you to our communications team for their work to ensure all the employees feel valued and we kick off the new school year right. And then along the lines of the Symposium for our Special Education, we have our CAP Symposium that's going right now. And today, our CAPS department wrapped up the first-ever symposium, two days of training to prepare hundreds of staff members from our community partners, after-school leaders, that are responding to the call to serve more students than ever before this year with our Expanded Learning Opportunity Program grant dollars. So kudos to Ann Pearson, Director of CAPS, who's in the audience, and her team for pulling this together. This is going to be valuable training that will enhance our after-school programs and ensure that they're ready to hit the ground running as we we expand much more broadly. And then not to be left out, our teachers, as we welcome them back, we will have teachers from across all grade levels, including guest teachers, that are participating in our Teacher Professional Development Days on July 26th. Our elementary teachers will participate, and on July 27th, we will welcome our secondary teachers to participate. They are going to hear from a special presenter and educator, Nicole Tucker Smith, on the topic of Activating Hope with Universal Design for Learning, along which coincides with the goals that we discussed earlier today or this evening. Staff of Elementary Instruction led by Director Amy Coker and Secondary Education Dr. Venkatesan. Again, commended for their work as we work to improve our teachers' capabilities. This will be in person, I believe. No, it's virtual. Okay, it is virtual. All right. And then just a couple more to wrap up. We have our Enrollment Fair on Saturday, July 30th. Enrollment and Placement Services will host an enrollment fair at Jones Elementary from 8:30 to 1:30. And just, I want to commend Leonard Buckner and his Enrollment and Placement Services team for putting on this event and providing access and ease for students and families to enroll for the new school year. And then lastly, Dr. Dottie Rogers mentioned, I had the great fortune as a new employee to the district, just a little over a year, to learn all the wonderful things that we do in the district. And one of those events was the Equity Scholarships put on by the ETA Department, where, again, $30,000 were raised and distributed to, you know, 43 deserving students. And so I was pleased to be on hand with several of my cabinet colleagues and want to congratulate our scholars and recipients, as well as Dr. Will Greer and his team for making this such a meaningful event and investment for our graduates. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Solon. All righty, we will move on to 10.0 action items. 10.1, Approval Personnel Report, number one, dated July 19, 2022, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, and terminations.
As presented, will
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. All right, motion carries. We'll move on quickly. 10.2, Approval to Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Plan Through Student Services.
So moved.
Okay.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
I would just like to come in. Mrs. Pearson, it is so comprehensive, the the report, I mean, just the whole plan. And I know the challenge of implementing it is great, but I have great confidence in your leadership. And I know that you know all the moving parts and you have the, you know, and if you need more people, right, to do the the CAPS, please, Dr. Rodriguez, you know, we know, you know that we will, I I can, I I won't speak for all my colleagues, but if we need more people, we, to implement this great plan, I I think we should do that and don't hesitate to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. And I just want to add something that we we talked about earlier, that hopefully there is no student on a waiting list. Right? And if there are students on a waiting list, then we need to take action as a board to ensure that our staff have the resources so our kids have a safe place to go to before and after school. So again, thank you, Ann, to you and your team. We really do appreciate it. All right, there's no, no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. 10.3. Oh, my apologies. Thank you for keeping me in check there, Mr. Solon and staff and colleagues. 10.4, 10.3 will be as pulled. 10.4, Adoption of New BP Board Policy 5144.4, Parental Attendance, Second Reading Student Services.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion on the policy? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to Approval of the Board Top 10 List.
Requires action? Second?
No, it did, but it looks like it does. All right, so it's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion on them?
I think it was covered earlier for most part.
I think so, and I would say we've had enough discussion as well, so let's vote.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the motions. I'm sorry.
Motion by Dr. Flores, seconded by Vice President Tillman. And now it's time to vote. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 11.0 Consent Items. 11.1 Approval Consent Items.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any items to be pulled?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
11.46.
11.46. Any others by any board members or staff?
Yes, 11.37.
11.37 by Dr. Dottie Rogers. Anyone else? For myself, it'll be 11.58. All right, so we have three items to be pulled, 11.37, 11.46, 11.58. Any other discussion or items to be pulled? All right, let's go ahead and vote on it. All right, motion carries. We'll go in numerical order. 11.37, Dr. Dottie Rogers?
Thank you. So I, as I was looking at this item, I thought about our previous board meeting, and and I know we, I I really, I wish I could speak to whatever the concern was, and and I can only assume. But I know we also talked about legal, you know, revisiting legal counsel through the event that we attended, Dr. Wyatt. This thing stays in my little folder until we have the conversation, so that's, it was a reminder. And so then also, what we, it was mentioned earlier, you know, starting on a new slate. And although we haven't had a conversation about our our legal partnerships that we have used in the past, and I don't know if that's another type of board meeting conversation, but I'm speaking on it now because I know that there's been some conflictual things, right? And again, I wish I had known what maybe the discussion was or wasn't the last time, but I kind of took an assumption. So here we are again with another, you know, a legal firm that perhaps we we need some further discussion. I don't know how far to go, don't want to go there to raise anything beyond that. But I can't support this based on where we are with legal and also the fact that we still need to discuss this. So moving forward continues to move forward with where we are, and we need to get some clarity. And even what was said earlier about a clean slate. I mean, somewhere, I remember when I first came to the board, one of the concerns was our legal. And 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 that was something that came up. Dr. Flores, you had mentioned, our consistency of our legal and billing and different things. And so what I've now experienced, I'm a little concerned as well. But I don't know when properly we'll have the discussion. And to vote on, vote on this tonight, no, because I even got, you know, questions, and normally we discuss things openly for the public. And then I, we can weigh in a little bit, so it doesn't look like we're trying to do something without, you know, openly discussing it with the public.
Thank you, Dr. Dottie Rogers. Ms. Sabios?
Thank you, Board President. I just want to also weigh in. I I agree. I think this item should be pulled for further discussion, only because there are a lot of questions revolving. You know, and and again, I think that maybe this is not the proper place to have that conversation, but we do need to have a conversation around it. So I I support.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios. And then myself, now I'm hearing my colleagues speak, and and one of my concerns is, is if we do pull on table this item, does it go, do we have legal representation, number one?
Well, didn't we have one in the room tonight? Who, what, who is that person? Because I know we have several, and you know, and that's why, again, we don't, we don't know.
I think Mr. Solon could really clarify here, because, you know, we did have some conversation about legal counsel and representation. And, you know, we have different firms representing different areas in our our business, because we have a lot of different areas of business we operate in education. And, you know, one of the pieces we also discussed is, you know, we work with a lot of firms, but we also work with a lot of individuals within firms. And, you know, do we need to consider the folks within the firms, maybe, or the firm offices that we work with? Because some of these have multiple offices throughout the area, not necessarily in our area either, as we've been working with folks that are from these firms, but outside of our area, not necessarily in an empire or even in our our county. So, you know, I just, I want to put that out there as a piece of, part of this big discussion is, you know, we always look at and talk about local representation, local businesses, trying to keep things closer to home and spend our money in the economy here. But that was just my concern as well, and I will defer to Mr. Solon on this to ensure that, you know, if this were, for whatever reason, tabled, would we be legally represented? So I just want to make sure. But that was my question to him first.
I would like to say something. Point of order.
Before he responds?
Before he says, point of order.
Well, okay, Dr. Flores?
Yes, point of order. We cannot table this unless there's consensus among the, we could vote. I, I, we can, I can move, point of order, I I move to approve this item. I just need a second.
There's a motion and we're in a discussion.
There's a motion, we're having a discussion.
So, yeah.
We have to, well, no, there's definitely a discussion going on right now.
This is exactly why I'm asking.
Oh, I thought, oh, I'm sorry. No, this is a discussion. This is still a discussion.
There's no motion. But point of order is, we cannot, if this item was not pulled when the agenda, it stays, it stays.
No, last board meeting, that's why I'm asking for clarity this time. We pulled it, we didn't do a discussion. I don't know what was going on with it. Like I said, I'm assuming.
I think that
Voted on the last one.
We voted on the last one.
As an, as an individual item, though.
We pulled it out.
Yeah, we voted on it as an individual item, not as, as part of the
You have to have a, you have to have a consensus to pull it.
Point of order?
Point of order, yes.
It's going to happen the same way we do all items that are pulled. There's nothing different.
We have to vote on it.
We're going to have a discussion.
We're going to vote.
You're going to look for a first and a second, and then you're going to You're going to look for a first and a second and then you're going to vote. If it passes, it passes, if it doesn't, it doesn't.
But I, but I will say this, just to acknowledge our colleagues as well, that we do need a deeper, further discussion in regards to representation as well for the district. And we have, as Dr. Dottie Rogers showed, that brochure, CSBA, as well, would be something I would like to investigate myself and further research. But if there are no more comments, I'll make sure I give everybody opportunity to make comment on this and I see down the way to the left here, Dr. Funches. All right.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt, and I understand the board needs time to consider direction that they need to go in and discuss. I would just ask for consideration and it may be something that Mr. Sullins and I may have to work with. There are several cases and things that this law firm is working on us currently with, probably a great number of them. And so I'm not sure what that would mean with those items should we not move forward. And I'm not, I'm just bringing that up as a fact or something that I have to try to work through with them. So it's just a consideration. I just wanted to point that out. It's just a point.
Thank you, Dr. Funches, and definitely for that information, which is very important. Ms. Rosales Medina.
Yeah, and just to piggyback on that statement, because we've had specialized individuals that pertain to charter schools, to different, I mean, different things that they would bring forward. So I just want to make sure that they're the ones that also handle it. So either way, this can be a discussion in the future, but either way, they have always handled cases that were, like I said, in different departments within our school district, not necessarily, you know, some of the touching points that maybe other board members may feel. So, and they've always done a great job in making sure that they brought this information forward. So I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina, Mr. Tillman, and Dr. Dottie Rogers.
Move to approve.
We still have, well, no, we still have, let's be respectful, we still have discussion points. Can we still do, okay, so we had a motion, a second by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Dr. Barbara Flores, and then discussion still, Dr. Dottie Rogers.
Is it, I thought I was missing, is it me?
Oh, no, you, you got her, right? Just a split second, yeah.
So I guess my question again, because these are the questions I couldn't ask or wasn't clear on last time. If we have various firms that we're currently using, did we know or when do we know that we don't have anything pending? I can't make that, I could not make that statement at the last board meeting. If that was the case, you know, we would be, we would have discussed that. No, I'm not looking to disrupt business, but I'm also looking to rectify something that we need to discuss. Now, whether it's tonight, which I'm prepared to discuss, or whether it's in a different setting, this came before all of my concerns. So we never had the discussion, right? And so then we ran into a bump in the road where I need clarity, where the community has asked me questions that I want clarity, for clarity's sake, for, you know, just, just to be clear. So whether we all agree on them or not, there is a concern to be raised and I, I don't know who's going to answer that right now. Are you going to answer it, Dr. Wyatt? Can you answer the concerns that were raised to clarify them so that I can be clear? Or can, do we have that discussion tonight? I don't know, because I'm talking about a previous situation that took and we're saying tonight, we know. If you would have asked me, you know, how many cases or when they closed, I don't have that answer. I don't, maybe you do, but I don't. But I also didn't know that the last time either, because I wouldn't have said, hey, you know, whatever, we voted, we were in an impasse, and then where are we at? Do you shift them over to the next person? Do they pick up where you are? I don't know all of that because we never had a conversation. We didn't even have a discussion.
Yeah, and, and to answer your question on, you know, pending cases litigation, I know that that can be handed off to a different firm, I know that. Now, how many cases? I have no idea either, I really don't. I think there are concerns out there in the community, but I also think that, I don't think, I know, that not all information on the particular incident we're referring to has been shared with the board either in regards to cost to other organizations. I haven't seen it either, just so you know, I know it's been requested, but I haven't seen it. So I, I would say, no, this is not the right time because we don't have all the information still for everyone involved, because there are many folks involved that we need to look at and analyze for cost, yeah.
The firm that I'm, I want to be clear because we've set off and made allegations of something, I'm referring specifically about this law firm or any law firm that we have currently as to it's time to examine them, whether, and they're not the only one that do the service because we took the time to do this. But if we move forward, I, I'm, I'm not going to be happy that we ignore this and then we make decisions and I can't answer or I'm not clear. And I hope people can understand that. This is clarity. I'm not pointing a finger at anybody or trying to raise anything, I just want clarity. And I want to know, are we going to move forward or consider?
CSBA, is that what you're asking?
Or anybody, but CSBA is what you and I brought back to the board.
If you're asking me, I mean, and consensus of the board, I think it's worth further discussion without a doubt on CSBA. I don't think right now, because this is not particularly this item on the agenda. I would, I would ask for consensus of the board to discuss utilizing them, which, you know, I agreed with you, I was with that, with you and we got that pamphlet, brought it together. But definitely, I think they are someone we need to take a look at as a potential partner in education with what we do and as you would say, a clean slate and change. So I would, you know, I would definitely entertain that and if we can get consensus of the board, I would ask for that. But I'll wait till we have our comments done real quick. Ms. Vios, you're next, and then Dr. Flores.
So I just want to start off, before I go into my comments, I just want to start off with a question because I guess this will lead my comments. Mr. Tillman just asked for a motion. I, I want to try to understand, what does that motion mean?
It's normal, there's the item pulled, so I made a motion, somebody seconded it. That means the next thing after discussion is, oh, we're going to vote.
On the item individually?
On this item.
As polled, okay. So there are some serious concerns and I think, you know, I, I had expressed to you, Dr. Wyatt, and, and another board member as well, some specific concerns. And my concerns revolve around that, you know, and, and again, there's a lot of questions and this may not be the place to, you know, bring that out and discuss that, but if I have to, I will, right? Because it can't happen that we continue to do this over and over and over again. I don't think it's okay, you know, even just the way we were going about right now just making a motion, you know, it's, it's kind of like trying to jump on, on it before anybody else can, you know, comment or say anything about it. And I'm, I'm trying to be very respectful and not, you know, saying more than I should at this point, but my concerns rely around that. So I'll just leave my comments at that for now.
Thank you, Ms. Vios, and I will comment on that, that we are voting on a contract, which I think isn't really the conversation that you're bringing up is in regards to this, because I will also comment that when I don't reply is because there's a concern about accuracy of information. I'll say that, and that deems a deeper conversation, I would say, closed session or between us because I know what's accurate and what's not, and I will stand by the record on that. And so that's something different than I think than voting on a contract. And then I will move over to Dr. Flores.
I'll for the vote.
All right, there's no further discussion, we will vote. So let's vote. That's not it up there. All right, motion carries, four yeas, two nays. We'll move on to 11.46. Dr. Flores, Loma Linda University Agreement.
Dr. Rodriguez, it's just clarification. I know, I, I really appreciate Loma Linda doing the work that they do for us and my only concern is the chronic absenteeism. I know they help us with that and I just want to know how we're keeping them accountable or do they report regularly? Is it monthly? Is it, you know, how, how does it work? Do we give them the data and they go and then, you know, I just need clarification.
Thank you for, for asking for clarification. I'm really proud of, of this work in the sense that we're being leaders and innovators in this work. A couple of months ago, I went to Stanford University with, with a cohort of, of assistant superintendents, superintendents, and they use this, this program, the partnership that we have with them. They named San Bernardino and Loma Linda as a model for the rest of the state. So I was very excited about that. There's also talk of legislation that will require CHU's at all schools. So the fact that we're on it says a lot about this board's commitment to the betterment of the community. As you mentioned, in regards to the chronic, the chronic absenteeism, these CHU's went out and worked with families, over 4,000 families they were able to work with and, and trying to get the information as far as why students were not coming to school. And that's something that has been very difficult for us as a school district to really ascertain. We know kids are there or not there and we don't necessarily know the real reasons. And so because of them, we're able to know that our students are missing because of health, because we know it's COVID related, mental health issues, student behaviors, students are sent out, they don't want their student to get in trouble, so they keep them home. Family issues, custody issues, mom being sick, dad being sick, having to take care of a younger sibling. Environmental factors, could be homelessness. And then also very specific parent concerns that they have. That data is hugely important. As we look at how we progress monitor this contract, we do meet with them monthly. We do work with them and we get reports from each CHU as well as the organization as a whole that compiles that. So we're able to know month to month who they're serving, how many contacts they've made, and so that is, that's hugely important to us. As we work and continue to work in conjunction with Loma Linda, looking at social determinants of health, knowing that that's also an obstacle to keep kids in school, they're a leader in helping us to be able to find out what other resources and referrals that we can provide to families, because we know that health is a major concern. We talked about wellness being a concern for our families and so this corroborates that, but it also provides the, the services not only for the students but for the families at large. And we know that many of our families are suffering from various illnesses, not just COVID, and so many of them don't understand necessarily where to get assistance and get help. And because of the CHU's and their connections with Loma Linda and other medical facilities, we're able to get parents the help that they need so that they can be their best so that they can then support their students. So it's more of a wraparound program and it is, it is a partnership that when we ask, they respond and, and they respond in minutes, not hours, not days, extremely responsive.
Thank you very much. I'm very grateful to your leadership for this and also to know that we're, we're the model for the state and just needed more clarification. You know, when you see the contract, you really don't understand all the, all the policy or the procedure or what happens and I'm glad that they report to you monthly. So thank you very much. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, but I did have. No, it's okay, clarification point on here and I'm glad you brought it up because I'm, I'm looking at it, the staff analysis at the second paragraph down and it's the third line down. So it talks about the program costs, a cost of $54,823.16 for the program manager, but then it says a cost of, you know, and that's the figure there, $641,000 for program coordinator and CHU's. So I'm just making sure, that's not the program coordinator, I'm sure making that kind of money, because I think we'd all be saying, I'd love to be that program coordinator, but what does CHU's incorporate? What does that mean when we say that? Because I'm trying to find it up above and I don't see it articulated there.
A CHU is a, a community health worker and they are people from the community that are trained by Loma Linda. They actually receive a certification from them that kind of gives them expertise around the social services that are provided in the community. And so for many, it is an entry level position and is springboard for other programming. We also hope to use them and leverage them to support us in providing and hiring additional parent advocates for us and also to leverage their expertise in filling some of the vacancies that we have within the district because they are so well-versed in the, in the resources that are available to the community. They do have a program manager and not only do we receive the services from the CHU's, but we also receive additional services in regards to professional development for our managers, GIS mapping. So we do have something in, in place where we're working on COVID death rates and superimposing them onto our school boundaries to determine whether there's any correlation with our chronic absenteeism and death rates in those communities so that we can then respond more deliberately and directly to those needs versus kind of speculating what's going on there. So there's a lot of additional services that we receive because of the partnership with Loma Linda.
Excellent and very detailed information response. So I guess I probably should have asked on this and there's, you know, the cost of a CHU's, how, you know, how many CHU's, I know it's kind of a funny acronym, but how many do we get for that price?
Sure, we have, we have eight CHU's.
Eight?
So we have CHU's in every cluster.
Gotcha, eight CHU's, okay. That's it for me, thank you. Ms. Rosales Medina.
When I was looking at the original contract, it said five, but let me look back. You said there's eight now?
It was amended, so it might be in the amendment.
We, we did have them in each cluster, supporting those specific school sites. We want to make sure that there's continuity in service and so we've assigned one person to be the liaison to work with the other supporting programs that support that cluster.
I see that, so to develop eight presentations, which is separate, so let me try to, so the thing is that, so these, if you look at the salary for the program manager, but yet you divide that, I mean, you divide the $641, I mean, it's, it's, are these, are these doctorates? Are these doctors? Are these people with, individuals with masters? I mean, are they where, you know, they have, you know, the specialized training or is it just, or is it not just, but are they those that are part of the community that are going through the training? Because it's very different, because now that I'm looking at it's like 100, well, if I divide it, because I had originally divided by, by six, including the program coordinator, but if it's eight, you're saying that would be nine, you know, would need to. Yeah, so it's, 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 it's still a lot of money per person, so I'm wondering what are their specialties on? I wasn't sure if I was able to see it in here.
And I'm, I'm trying to look it up. I'm going by just my experiences with them and, and I do work closely with them. The program manager is a doctoral candidate, has various experiences working in public health as well as education, has worked with AmeriCorps, has worked with migrant students up north, has been working with Loma Linda for quite some time and El Sol is one of the promotores in the community. We had the great fortune of inviting her over to one of our meetings as a, as a division to talk about social determinants of health and she went through her entire resume with us. She has the caliper of someone who could be a manager within our district as far as the expertise that she provides, the clarity, the, the knowledge, it's not superficial. It is extreme, the depth that she has is second to none. And I say that because I've worked with her. Now, the CHU's, as I mentioned, it is an entry level position. They don't need to have BAs, they don't need to have master's degrees. Those are people from our community that we train to be able to serve other people. The, the CHU, I mean, I'm sorry, the program manager, as we're looking at, and I think, I, I don't remember the number, so I'm going by memory. I think it's like 54,000, is that correct? Okay, 54, yeah. That amount. That amount for the work that we get from her is uncomparable. I mean, she, she could easily be making $100,000 in the work that she does, in the community work that she does, in the partnerships. $54,000 is extremely reasonable in the service that we're getting from them.
I guess because then, when you look at, they're not necessarily working full-time. They're doing eight meetings a year, they're getting paid quarterly. They says they'll be paid on a quarterly basis, so this is a continuous cycle. So, I mean, I get it, there's our services that we definitely need by individuals that are fully trained. But for me, it's always a question of how much is too much? And, but I know if they're providing, you know, good outcomes, that's helping our district, and that makes sense.
All righty, great discussion, and thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, for very detailed information again.
To move?
It's been moved improperly seconded, I believe, already, right?
Okay.
So let's go ahead and vote, folks. All right, it's a 5-1 vote, so motion carries. We'll move on to 11.58, and that one was my item that I pulled. I won't be recusing myself, I will abstain from the vote, there is no cost to it. But as I am a Samuel County Superintendent employee, just want to make sure that we're transparent about that. But, so I won't recuse, but I will abstain.
Vote.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded, any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries, five yay and one abstention. We'll move on now to 12.0, 12.1, review of board requests. Ms. Antevedos.
Good evening, board, it's a pleasure to be here with you. I do want to take a moment to thank the wonderful David Chavez and the Wizard of Oz behind the door back here, Daniel Tisdale, because they're the magic behind the video that you saw, so I want to give credit where that's due. Thank you, I agree, so. The request that I caught for you this evening, first, Mr. Tillman asked that we would agendize and review a plan for spending the remaining SR dollars and LCAP carryover, which should include investments in wellness centers. There was another conversation a little bit later where there was a discussion about doing that at a special board meeting after the unaudited actuals are presented and evaluating what other school needs might happen. So there was consensus on a special board meeting. Ms. Myra Sabios asked if we would establish a schedule for presenting progress on the KPI goals throughout the year or the key metrics. Dr. Barbara Flores asked if we would encourage the team to pursue more than 5% improvement in the chronic absenteeism number. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina recommended that we, that even though we have wellness services at all schools, that we really work toward creating wellness center spaces, and that that be part of our plan, especially at the high schools. Dr. Gwen Rogers asked that the board, that we would provide the board with the cost, timelines, and a space analysis for developing wellness center places at our schools, so that we would have a clear picture of what that looks like. Dr. Rogers also asked if we would update on the plans for the Welcoming Resource Center and the Centralized Wellness Center that's part of that facility. Dr. Rogers asked if we would then provide a baseline for the key metrics in those goals presentations, so that we know where we're starting from. Dr. Wyatt asked that we would create a form to capture board rankings for the search firms, tabulate those, and notify the board on the results or the top three. Dr. Barbara Flores asked for a report. You did ask a little bit about the nutrition services in the policy, but I think that was answered in the course of the meeting. Dr. Barbara Flores asked that we report on how LCAP has been used to limit dual-language combo classes. I'm pretty sure that was, you also asked, I'm sorry? Mitigate them, yes, okay, I'll change that. And then Dr. Barbara Flores asked that we would organize the agenda so it was clear that they were grouped by division. You asked that we would include ICU/UC students as well in the Wellness Center Task Force or planning processes. Mr. Danny Tillman asked about, or just reminded the staff to include a third option on the permission slips for the COVID testing, so that parents can give permission for the one time only, as opposed to having to do it for the whole year. Mr. Danny Tillman asked that we would evaluate needs for our COVID management to ensure that we've planned for enough support. Ms. Myra Sabios asked that we would update, ask for an update on changes in COVID case rates and the health impacts of those case rates, and specifically mentioned death rates from COVID. Ms. Myra Sabios asked that we would ensure parent engagement is encouraged in person as well as online as we're learning to live with COVID. Dr. Gwen Rogers encouraged everybody to attend our wellness conference. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, just to also include that we are not, that there is nothing in place that prohibits parents from participating. I guess that was more of a question that I had, that there's nothing in place that the district has from prohibiting any parents from participating in person.
Okay.
So I guess that's a question for, yeah.
Nothing prohibits, okay. Okay, I think I caught that one. Dr. Gwen Rogers asked that we would encourage the staff to attend the County Wellness Conference next year when that comes up. I put question marks after this because I didn't capture this whole thought, and I think you said investigate comfort dogs. Did I?
Yes, there was a request that came to us, and I think Dr. Rodriguez has it. Comfort dogs for, it's a specific school that requested it, but, you know, I don't know how far we want to take it out.
So I just said investigate comfort dog services. And then right after that, which is, because I know you went right into this, was to update on the student board member selection process. I think you mentioned student voice, but I kind of wrapped that in with the request. Or Dr. Sabio, I mean, sorry, Ms. Sabios asked about the student voice, and I think you said student voice, and Dr. Wyatt asked about the student board members. So I talked about the selection process and the responsibilities of our student board members. Ms. Myra, oh, I'm, Dr. Scott Wyatt then asked that we would investigate artificial intelligence as a possible career pathway. Dr. Scott Wyatt asked that we would ensure that there are no students on the CAPS waiting list and inform the board if, in fact, there was. And then Dr. Rogers, also echoed by Dr. Wyatt, asked that we would provide or bring back some clarity around the legal contracts and what cases they handle for the district. And I think that was all 27 of them.
And the promotion of the mental wellness centers, remember, just somehow you guys are gonna do that, so they know what we have currently. And, you know, just as a clarification again, it'd be nice to put the 988 number on the district website.
I think we have corrected the 988.
Move to adjourn.
I do want to say, Dr. Sullins, you did amazing today, thank you.
Promoted him to doctor, too. I like that, wow, that's how good he did. That is how good you did, Dr. Sullins, I like that. You know, what do we call that, when a college does that? Honorary, absolutely. Well, folks, good evening, we made it. We didn't make it till tomorrow, which is a blessing, and just want to say best wishes, many prayers, many blessings to our staff, students, families, and the new year. May we have an outstanding year ahead of us. Good night.